No, actually, we're taking a closed session. Actually, taking a burning student matters.
With respect to student number zero three dot two eight dot seventeen dot zero one zero, I would move that we expel the student for the remainder of this semester and that that expulsion be enforced. The student also be expelled for the first semester of next academic school year. But that second semester expulsion be suspended. And the condition of the suspension would be that the student would be placed on a zero zero contract. Is there a second?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, there are no minutes to take here to action on. And so the next one is the boards of Scotland. First one is the citizens oversight and Roseanne.
It looks like we have two members of our committee, three members of our committee here. Mary Dawn is the chair, Laura Parks, and Ray, back there. There he is. Okay. So, hello, I'm Mary Dawn. And my husband and I are both graduates of, we call it Hollister High School. I can honestly say that I don't see any of my teachers or vice teachers. But, and then my children have graduated. So I'm sure that you can affect with some of them, and I apologize. Thank you, first of all, board, for having us here tonight. And to administration for all your support and staff members. And I would especially like to point out three staff members that have been a huge help. And I want to apologize, first of all, to all of you that are standing, sitting behind me. I'm going to try to talk loud, hopefully you can hear. It's going to be such wonderful news. You're going to be so excited. And I want to be sure you can hear it. And Roseanne Liscano, Rob Zimmerman, and Deanna Viellon, they have been fantastic in the task that you voted for us to undertake. And we appreciate everything that you have done. Every single meeting, anytime we had a question or wanted to go on a tour, it happened. And it was because of them, and we do appreciate that was on top of everything else they do for you guys. Somebody at Ohio School. Your district board decided that you needed a bond issue. And so it was called Measure G, and it was for forty-two point five million dollars. And it went to vote on June third, twenty fourteen, and was passed by the voters. The education code requires that the board establish an independent citizens oversight committee. And the board did that. They voted to do that on August sixth, twenty fourteen. And then they started asking, begging, pleading, whatever they had to do to get members of the community to serve on that board. And so somebody begged me, and darn, I think I owed him or something. So, but it's been a wonderful experience. After we were asked and we were introduced to the board on January fourteenth of twenty fifteen. And we immediately were, had the Brown Act training. On March fourteenth, we had training by a lawyer, Margaret, I think her name, Cleveland. And her, she was teaching us what the role of the citizen oversight committee was supposed to do. And it was very in detail and very helpful because, of course, we were told a little, but this told us what we could and couldn't do. And one thing that's important is that we tell people when we're asked that we are not an advisory board to the district board. We don't determine how the funds are going to be spent. That was determined when the voters voted for the bond issue. And it's very specific. There are five very specific things. Okay, I'll get to that point. See, I'm going to screw her up totally because I'm not going to stay on task. The things that this board decided, the five things that the money should be spent on is to replace and/or upgrade classrooms and labs, to repair roofs, plumbing, and electrical systems, to add twenty-first century instructional and vocational technology, to improve schools' safety, and to improve access for persons with disability. And the functions, our functions are listed up there, and I know you guys can't see it, and I'm sorry. The functions of our committee are to review annually independent and financial performance audits. And that's required by state law, to make physical inspections, to review the deferred maintenance plan, to prepare annual and final reports to the board and to the public, and to review efforts to maximize bond revenues. And so things, our committee activities for, and we're talking about here, this is the very first report. And the first bond was not sold until after July first of twenty fifteen. So we couldn't, we didn't give a report that first six months or whatever. This is the report for July first, twenty fifteen, to June thirtieth, twenty sixteen, which seems a long time ago. But that's by law what we have to do. And it has to be done by a certain time this spring. So we're getting it done. In that year, our committee met ten times. We had inspections of the campus four different times on the projects that were under the Measure G. We, like I said, we had the Brown Act workshop and the training on what our job was. We attended a couple of public meetings. And we attended some board meetings when something on the bond issue was being discussed. And we attended the groundbreaking for the CTE building, which is the, CTE, career, technical education. So we have done all of those things in that year, twenty fifteen to twenty sixteen. And have continued on from there, meeting frequently. But that'll be our next report next time. All of our agendas and all of our minutes can be found on the district's website if you want to look at them. And we were kept legal by Roseanne. She makes sure everything's posted and our minutes are done and they're up there, and Deanna. So we appreciate that. At our meetings, which are open to the public, we discussed, we were updated on bond sales, on the design review, the construction activity, expenditures, which we spend a lot of time on. And we were given the twenty fifteen facilities master plan, which was approved by the board. Quite detailed and very interesting. An independent audit by CPA firm, which the district hires, has to be done, is required by law. So for that, those years, July twenty fifteen through June of twenty sixteen, an audit was done. And the final audit was produced on December seventeenth, twenty sixteen. We received it on January twenty-third, twenty seventeen, at our meeting. And we're able to review it, ask questions, and see if they agreed with how we were feeling. And they say, "The results of our test indicate the district expending, but building fund, which is Measure G, funds only for the specific projects approved by the voters." Last line of a very thick audit report that says, "Good for you guys, you're doing it right." So that's kind of where you look. First of all, is it the last page, right? Make sure everything's okay. You'll see our budget summary for those specific months, twenty fifteen to twenty sixteen. This budget shows the Measure G budgeted costs, the expense, the status of the, not only the expenses, but where the project is, if it's in progress or completed. And remember, some of these are already completed, but they weren't at this date. And it shows our savings. Total expenses, fourteen million, one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And savings of one million, seven hundred and sixty-one thousand, five hundred and fifty-six dollars. And you can see that some grants were also received of eight hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars. The savings will be reallocated to unbudgeted projects that satisfy the bond requirements. So our observations, I'm sure they're on there somewhere. But we feel as a committee that the twenty fifteen facilities master plan has been utilized to strategically plan and prioritize bond design and construction projects. So it's great to have a master plan, it's wonderful to use it. The district has been successful in maximizing the Measure G funds by leveraging them as matching funds from state and federal grants. Really, really exciting. This has provided for coefficients in design and construction of projects resulting in reduced mobilization costs, redundant work efforts, and gross construction costs. Value engineering techniques have been utilized at all phases, including design, project supervision, and construction to achieve the best value of product and cost. The committee has found that the district is in full compliance with its responsibilities as described by state law, and Measure G funds have been used on board-approved projects, goals, and objectives. Overall, our committee has taken our responsibility very seriously. And we're pleased with the quality of the bond program. Based on the performance of the Measure G program, we are encouraged and confident that it will finish on schedule, within budget, and in compliance. Also, you'll see that there are plenty of wonderful pictures to look at. I know you guys have seen everything. It's very exciting for us when we get to go out and see what's happening and see the enthusiasm of not only the teachers that have helped put, give some input, but also Rob, he's always very enthusiastic. And just the progress, it's amazing. And to be so on time and to have it all planned around when students aren't going to be here and students are going to be here. And it's just been very well run. And I know it's going to be done on time. And we're really looking forward to Measure U. Do we ask for a question? If you have questions, Roseanne is standing.
Thank you very much.
And thank you to Laura, very faithful board member, committee member.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is division report to commit.
Feel like I've been here recently.
Much earlier.
Possibly. I'm not sure how we make this go. We've just got four slides, strengths, weaknesses, and highlights, I think. So we've got strengths. Growthers. Highlights. If you'd like to talk about the multi-page document that's probably before you, I'll entertain questions.
You know what, can I just tell you, I love this presentation. Just so you know, I was all for it. I like, I just wanted, I looked through here, and what I really like is that you guys are now, like, utilizing the cap to rewrite your questions to make it more familiar for the students. So I thank you on that because Springboard doesn't necessarily correlate, but it definitely is a better step in the right direction. So I definitely appreciate that because that'll only help our students do better.
I like the Frank and Alice picture that you gave us on how we do with the state compared with the global area. And I thought, whoa, we have a little growing to do in some areas. And you seem to have a lot of ideas on how you're going to get there.
Definitely like your articulation between departments, that future thought, that's a, we got to start thinking outside thoughts. So I appreciate the suggestions because that's going to definitely step us in the right direction.
So I'm going to make up for Mr. Quinn's. We're exact opposites, so we do really well together. Obviously, I'm long-winded. But what he's failing to tell you is one of the big strengths of the math department is Dan Quinn himself. As you guys know, he is one of the most veteran teachers. And with the department that has so many new teachers, we absolutely, it is critical that we have a person who's not afraid to push the envelope, to be innovative, someone who also will take care of his people, take care of his new teachers, groom them, but also be very willing to have those hard conversations. You know, that's something that I truly believe should not only come from administration, but from peer to peer, those critical conversations about putting, shining the light on areas of growth. So he spends a lot of time in my office, not at all because he's in trouble, but because he's always got an idea. He's always got a question, and he knows. You know, we all know math, he's got a bit, he's got a lot of pressure, along with myself and the rest of the administrative team in trying to reach the goals that we have within math and what we want, where we want to be in four years. He knows a lot of that is going to fall on him. He's taking it on full, fully, and just really appreciate his leadership within our team. He's truly a part of our team right now as far as his leadership goes. We got, we got a lot of work to do, but we got the right guy in place.
And in the right direction.
How many teachers are we going to need to hire for this special in the math department?
With Mr. Tannenbaum's passive blessing, I believe we're looking at one, possibly two.
Don't go any further.
I don't want to go. I know.
Yeah, you're right, Dan. That's good because the turnover's been higher than Avenue. And not a lot of math teachers out there.
I know, and that's good. We're not losing a lot.
Yeah, let's hold on to them.
Are we down stepping in the retraining of Springboard yearly? Are we going to go back to that or?
No, we're gonna, we're sending a team to Phoenix appropriately at the end of July for a three-day workshop. And it's kind of a train the trainer type of a situation.
So you guys can train yourselves.
So we just become more proficient at how to implement Springboard methodology.
Hey, there's nothing better than a teacher to train other teachers.
I've been there here all year long, so especially whether, you know, you need to change what's new or to Springboard, it's all you have to get used to. So to have that support year-round instead of just from training, it would be really helpful.
And it's better than having somebody else tell you because we all know when you walk away from a conference, you've got like probably three good things, have all the stuff you learned that you can actually retain and use. But you guys having, you're imparting the knowledge and you're also working the system. And so you're only going to be better and better as you go. Because we all know pilots take at least two to three years to, to you're down enough to teach well. Thank you.
And tomorrow, we begin our work on defining our essential standards. And we have the consults coming that we've worked through in the past, that does really great work. And we have teachers coming from our theater. So we have two teachers coming from Spring Road to work with us, focused on algebra. A teacher from Hollister School District, and a teacher from San Andreas. So we're really looking forward to that.
The vertical articulation.
Major part of this.
Is how, are they looking, okay, that's good.
Dan, we're proud of you.
Thank you, Dan. You're the best.
So before you, before you leave, Ray always used to ask at the end, "What can the board do to help your department?" So is there anything that we can do as a board that can help you guys?
I think as we move forward as a school, we're looking at changing some structures internally in the future. Maybe not the near future, but I think the board needs to be open to whatever teachers and administration sort of bring forward in terms of changing, changing structures and allowing different ideas to possibly take hold as we, as we try to move forward. It could be some things.
Can the board open anything that'll improve the?
But the thing is, is you never know until you try different paths.
Right.
I'll just leave it at that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. Appreciate your board. Try to not make it so long next time.
Okay.
Cut down a little bit.
Run!
Okay, and the next one then is Derek Barnes and the social science department. I don't think Paul had there.
Hello, everyone. It's been a while since I've had to do one of these. I think the last time I did one of these, like, ten-thirty at night to midnight. So I appreciate you getting us much earlier in the evening. So you read our report. I tried to do as thorough of a job as I could with that report and include as much of the information that you needed and have things in the appendix that would also kind of lead you to some more data and some results. So I guess, you know, afterwards, we can have specific questions if there's something on there that you don't understand. But what I decided to share out with you was something that we came up with. You know, I think our department for a long time has been really good at doing the PLC model and incorporating that into our curriculum in all areas. And I think that we've done a really good job for at least the past three or four years of doing common formative and common summative assessments where, you know, I think we're probably around eighty-five to ninety percent common in every test that we give throughout every section. So what I was thinking about one day when we were having a DC meeting is, you know, we don't really ever look at like the importance of the CFAs or the CSAs and why are we doing them? And what are the, what is the data actually telling us? And do we utilize it to the best of our ability? And I, and one of the things that I always try to do with my department is kind of push them. Like, I think sometimes we get very stagnant, and we're, we're pretty good at the things that we do. But I want us to get better. And I think the only way to get better is for us to continue to evolve and to continue to push ourselves to be better, not only for our, for our classes, but for our students in the classes too. So I came up with this lesson on how do we use CFAs? And we kind of just went with like a simple objective. How do we create them, utilize, and administer them to help drive instruction with our students? And basically, I kind of had each of my PLCs meet in their designated room. I gave them the timeline. We had, you know, questions that they had to focus on. And basically, from there, I put into, I put in a summarization of what everybody kind of gave me as feedback. And it was, it was nice to see that there was so much overlap from PLC to PLC. We do a good job of horizontally approaching our curriculum. So, you know, since we are working as PLCs and since we are kind of using that to drive the instruction, the world studies teachers are pretty good at communicating with world studies teachers. The US history teachers are very good at communicating with that, and so on, and so on. But one of the things that we came, that we, that came out of this is that we need to do a better job of using the vertical approach. How are we building skills from tenth grade to eleventh grade, eleventh grade to twelfth grade? And we do, to a certain extent, have some correlation there. And we try to increase the rigor, and we try to increase the expectations of what we want on tests and in the classroom. But we really had not sat down and really talked about that. And so one of the things that came out of this is one of the things that we're going to move forward with beginning this Thursday is kind of creating a vertical approach. We had, we had four teachers go to the social science framework last month and got what the new framework is going to look like and the changes that are going to be made in each of our courses. And the focus more on depth rather than breadth, that's what the social science curriculum is going with. And they've really kind of shrank the parameters as far as the year coverage if they want because they want us to get more into contemporary issues. So it's a perfect timing based on the results that we got from this to generate those conversations starting Thursday and really start working on a plan for the rest of the year that we can roll out into next year. So that we can create skills that we want taught in each and every course, how we're going to build upon those skills, how we're going to utilize similar images or passages or test questions from one course to another with maybe increasing the rigor and the difficulty each and every year as kids get better at understanding that information. We talked about like what a typical CFA looks like. And, you know, for us, they're, they're quite long. And we kind of do a lot of multiple choice questions because that's kind of like, you know, for, for social science, that's where you're going to get a bulk of the questions. So one of the things that we looked at and going to the Great Oaks visit with the team was looking at tests that utilize a multitude of test questions. And we're in the process now of working cross-curricularly with English in the tenth grade level and the eleventh grade level and kind of really trying to figure out a way of how to incorporate more writing and utilizing rubrics that are similar to what they teach in English so that we can utilize those rubrics in, in social science so they're not foreign to those students. Kind of giving students a different variety of a test that would be similar to kind of the structure that they would get in AP, but not the difficulty level. So that there would be a multiple choice section, there'd be a short answer section, there would be an essay section, and starting to make those more of the norm for our tests. So our multiple choice section is going to probably shrink. But what we're going to be asking students to do from a written standpoint is actually going to increase. And then the data, you know, for the most part, because we use EDMS and we're pretty good at delving into EDMS and really my PLC leads are very good at looking at like how the, how the data matches up to the standards, we're pretty consistent at being able to create meaningful retesting strategies, reteaching strategies in the classroom because we are able to utilize the data that they, the way we want. And even switching to the new tests are not going to prevent us from utilizing EDMS in the way that we need to because the rubrics are already built in and, and those types of things that we can utilize to kind of help us still get the effectiveness that we want. The one thing that we did mention, and I did want to mention to you guys, is the variables. The data doesn't tell us what a student's home life is like. The data doesn't give us any mindset into, is that student taking care of their family when they go home? And that's probably why they're not doing homework or why they're not studying. And so that's the data that's really hard to extract as teachers unless you talk to every single teacher, I mean, every single student or the counselors and get the backstory. It's really hard for us to understand why students are not working. Are they lazy or is it an external factor that's out of our control? Learning targets and standards, we focus on standards. I mean, that's pretty much how our curriculum works, and that's going to not change yet, especially with the new standards being ruled out. And like I said, we're going to start incorporating many more common core-type standards, especially the literacy and writing standards into our curriculum because we are starting to work now with English. So it's going to be an easy, it's going to be an easy articulation to do that because we're going to be working so closely with them. And how do they drive? I mean, I think I've covered that. And then the horizontal, vertical, we kind of, I kind of hit on that. And for us, how do they help us? You know, for us, it's, we get to figure out what the kids learn each and every unit. And we're constantly reteaching the questions and the standards that they had trouble on. And then we're constantly putting those questions on the next test, the midterm, the final, and we're trying to see progression. Because when you use them in EDMS and you're just plucking them out over and over again, you can kind of see how they did from each test. And, and we're seeing numbers where they are doing better each and every, each and every test. And chain your resources, I think, I guess I'll answer that when Steve asks this question, "What can the board do to support you?" Because I will answer that question in a minute. But so that's, you know, that's kind of. But so that's, you know, that's kind of the snapshot of what I wanted to kind of share with you because I think it gives you a better insight to actually like what our department is doing from the standpoint of with our curriculum and our educational philosophy.
Questions?
I was commenting that I was flattered at how well our kids performed. I was, that was pretty impressive that we're actually outstanding globally, not just the state of California, but globally. So, that was pretty amazing to see.
You know, my comment is I think it's a terrific idea that you guys are heading in the direction of cooperating with the English department. I think that's, that's really a great idea. And after all, in everyday life, we don't have, you know, one division or a different division, we just have things in general. And I think coordinating and practicing right in between the two different disciplines is really important. I think it'll, it'll help your students if they go on to higher education if you're...
So, what do you get, what do you need from us?
Well, two things. The first thing is, is that we have to understand this. As the school, or more importantly, our department increases the expectations and the rigor of our students, there's going to be bumps. I'm going to be honest with you. I mean, I would say that for the most part, we've probably had consistently in some of our courses, the highest fail rates out of all of that. But it's because I believe at times we hold students accountable to what our expectations are, and we don't bend on that. So, if we, if we are focused more on competency than compliance in all of our courses, and it is that way where we tier it up from 10th grade to 11th grade to 12th grade, we're increasing the competency for students by five percent each course, then there are going to be times where the students are going to struggle with that. And, you know, the support we'd like is that that's the expectation. And we need to, we need to not lower our expectations, but we need to make sure that students that go through any course at San Antonio High School are expected to deal with rigor and make sure, and understand that we're trying to hold true to that mission statement, that we want to prepare you for those opportunities once you leave this school. And just socially promoting you through is not going to help you at that next level. And then the second thing is, is that, you know, and I've talked a couple of years, is getting, delegating resources so that we have opportunities to get test questions so that we're not making test questions all the time. And test questions that are relevant to Common Core, test questions that are relevant to inquiry-based type questions that we could have uploaded into EDMS so that they could be utilized by not just my department, but any department on campus. And they're aligned to standards and things like that. And we're not spending our time trying to create, reinvent the wheel if the wheel's already in there and it's a good wheel for us to utilize.
I have a question. Page 93. You know, I was happy to see you doing well, really even against the global comparison. But page 93, we have AP Psychology, and I'm wondering if you can explain what's going on there. It seems to be the only one that's below. And I'm wondering, could it be they're not PLC meetings with you? Or could there be a reason? Or is it just more rigorous?
I don't have an answer for that.
What, here's a couple. There's one thing that we do know is that we did have, we did have a change in teacher teaching the course. That is one variable that we do know occurred. So, you know, it's definitely as we, as we take a look globally at master, master schedule and we take a look at assignment, future assignments, the trend in our AP scores is definitely something we have to be very honest about with each other. So, you know, that's definitely an area that myself and Mr. Barnes have been talking about, is we take pride in the course within the department. So, that's my job as a principal, to take a look at that. Now, I can't sit here and tell you that's the...
Only in a closed session. I'd like to know more about if there was any difference because this, this is amazing. I look at AP Economics Above and oh my God, look at where you are. So, compared to the state, compared globally, then I think, oh, what happened here? You know, and I noticed that the last time, too. So, I thought maybe that would change, but it seems to be something that continues. And, you know, I don't know the reason, so I'd like to learn more about that. Okay? And it involves personnel, I'd like to learn about in a closed session.
Derek, for the last like, I don't know, 12 years, I've listened to you, you know, give your departmental presentations. And I just want to say, and I think, you know, Mr. Tiffany, who's been on the board that long, to Mr. Rodriguez in the audience, administrators, your department has been the most consistent over that time period as far as looking and utilizing the PLC approach, analyzing student performance, and actually doing something about it. So, I'd love to ask you.
Yeah, I think you guys have led the PLC project. It was, you guys were doing it before it became the end thing to do.
Yep.
So, you guys have added, added the curve.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Are we moving towards this model, both really at the school?
Yes.
I don't know what they've been doing for all these years. I remember when Sagala was doing great, great things in economics and Social Science and it seems to be a tradition. Thank you.
Thank you, Derek.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is the English learner presentation. It says administrative team, so I assume we're going to get a couple of people up here.
Good evening, trustees. Tonight, Joanne Kaplansky will be doing the bulk of the report. Our EL program specialist, Wayne and I will support a little bit. Where is it? Let's see. Maybe there. Let me go. Oh, there we go. Oh, that's the reading one. No? Oh, see? Nope. Hold on, we'll get there. There we go. Okay, good evening, trustees. So, in this presentation, I'll go over the English learner demographics, what we are required by the state and federal government, our current and past CELT results, the new definition for designated English language development from the new ELA and ELD framework, as well as how we're supporting our English learners currently, our strengths and obstacles, and next steps. So, as you know, in the report, we have eleven percent of our total population that are designated as English learners. It's really important that we understand that there's a clear distinction between those two, between the group of English learners. We have the majority of our English learners that are over eighty-five percent, or we're about eighty-five percent right now, that are long-term English learners, which means that they've been studying English, most of them born here in the United States, studying English for more than five, six years. They've sort of plateaued academically or as far as their English proficiency and growth. And so, their needs are very specific. Our other group of English learners are maybe what you might think of your typical English learner that is dominant in their, in English, in a language other than English, and those are our newcomer students. Some of our newcomer, although they're a small, a small group of students, their needs are very specific. They, we have some refugees. We've got students that come here unaccompanied. We have students that are sight, students with interrupted formal education. And so, in addition to academic needs, like the long-term English learners, they also have some social and emotional needs as well. I thought, I wanted to share our language designation by school. So, there in the blue is our eleven percent of English learners. But what's important here to understand is that less than fifty, just under fifty percent of our total population speak a language other than English at home. The red is our, are re-designated fluent English proficient students that have been fully exited, monitored and exited. And then currently, we are monitoring that seven point nine percent. So, students that have been reclassified over the last two years were required to monitor them until, until they are fully exited. And then that green, which is about just over three percent, those are our initial fluent English proficient students. So, students that were identified as possible English learners because they speak another language at home and then tested and at the proficient level that, so they didn't qualify to be part of the English learner program. So, there are many state and federal requirements for the education of English learners. I know that many of you were on the board as we went through the federal program monitoring process this past summer, and that English learner data collection and process was certainly the most stringent and rigid. We have several board policies surrounding this and classification, education waivers, et cetera. We do test our students on their English language development annually. For anyone who is new to school, we test them within the first thirty days and then annually thereafter so that we can monitor their growth in their English language development. That test was the CELT test. It is now changing to a test called the LPAC. And Ms. Kaplansky recently participated in a pilot of that test at one of our feeders and it is very, very rigorous. So, the designations and the testing will look a little bit different in the future. We are required to notify parents twice a year. We notify them on their CELT scores and we also notify them on their placement, their students' placement in their courses and in their ELD placements. We are required to have an English language advisory committee, the D-LAC. Because we operate as a single school district, we just have the district-level advisory. We cover the requirements for the district level and the school site level, which would be an ELAC or an English learner advisory committee if we had multiple school sites. We are required to provide specific English language development support for all of our English learners at all levels. So, we have our ELD levels one through four for our students here. In the past, we received a report, it was sort of like the program improvement report type report, monitoring for English language learners. Those were called the AMAOs, and it looked at our students growing on CELT level, our students becoming proficient for both newcomers and long-term English learners, and it also looked at how they did on state testing. That is going to change to a new accountability system and be woven in through Title I. So, some changes in the monitoring at the state, federal level for English language learners. There we go. Okay, sorry, we're skipping some of the slides because this report is rather long. If you look at, thank you, Joanne, our CELT results over the past three years, you'll notice that the bulk of our students, about forty, forty-four percent of our students are at that early advanced level. So, these students are doing well academically, they're getting really close to being able to re-designate. Many of them will re-designate, you know, within the next year. If you were to look at our CELT results three years prior to that, so looking at thirteen, fourteen and prior, and for many, many years before that, our students would get stuck at that intermediate or that CELT three level and would become long-term English learners and just be stuck there. We did a tremendous amount of work. Ms. Kaplansky really dug into this over the years and we really carefully defined and honed our ELD program for our English learners, and we saw that growth. We saw the bulk of our students move from that CELT three level to the CELT four and then to reclassifying. So, we've shown growth, but then you'll see over these past three years, we're kind of stuck there now. And so, we want to look at how do we take our ELD program to that next level to make sure that our students re-designate while they're here with us at San Antonio High School. So, when we're looking at program needs, it's important that we understand the difference between designated and integrated ELD. So, designated is that time that's specific in their schedule for ELD, English language development, looking at the language demands that they need at their CELT level. So, for example, CELT one, CELT two, our newcomers are getting specific instruction ELD at their level. We have integrated ELD, that's the area that we really need to work on. That's the area we need to focus. That's all teachers, every single teacher that has an English learner in their classroom is responsible for the integrated ELD in their classrooms. Now, that's using the ELD standards and their content standards as well as the Common Core standards. So, you can see how that can be very overwhelming for a teacher and especially if you have students at different levels. So, in a math class, you may, you might have a CELT one student and a CELT four student, as well as your general ed students and all these different standards as well as the ELD standard. So, how are we going to support our teachers with that integrated piece? Because we are responsible for both the designated and the integrated piece for all of our students. So, currently, we, as Ms. Crowe just mentioned, we do have four levels of ELD all at the different proficiency levels. You can see the sections divided up and see that we have the majority of our sections at the ELD four level, which are for those long-term English learners. That ELD four course is also A3G approved. We have all students that will be in grade level ELA from newcomer to long-term English learner. We have an instructional aide that focuses mainly on supporting our newcomer students in the ELD one, ELD two, in our support for World Studies and Biology. And she also is in two algebra courses. We have some peer academic tutors in math, some of our recently reclassified students that were reclassified at the semester that we've placed in math to support some of our newcomer students, after-school tutorial, summer ELD where we target those incoming ninth graders who meet those basic requirements to reclassify and try to give them that push to reclassify before getting into, getting into San Antonio High School. And then we have a new monitoring tool that is called Elevation that is an online platform, and that's what we're trying to head towards, how we monitor our students, doing a better job at monitoring our students. And we believe this is a good first step in doing that. It houses all of the EL data in one place. Mr. Faseta has been a big help in getting that going. We're currently using the monitoring tool for reclassifying students and for monitoring those, the first and second year for the reclassified students. And then, as mentioned, we have this newcomer bio and world studies course. Our strengths, we have some very committed ELD teachers, teachers that are leaders within their PLC in the department. They are highly trained in the ELD standards and in strategy and EL, ELD pedagogy. They collaborate well together. They, we have our reclassification rates that have remained steady. We have built-in supports and then this new elevation monitoring tool that I just mentioned. And then our obstacles, how do we support those students? How do we move from where we are? Ms. Crocker mentioned the, we've kind of remained sort of stagnant the last three years. How do we get that extra push? We know that we need integrated ELD. That's going to require some more professional development. We have increased numbers in newcomers and those needs are many. Our next steps, and this is part of our plan, and this is where I ask for your support, we plan to pilot an ELA class where those newcomers will be probably in the 10th or 11th grade because that's where they're, where we have the highest numbers. The English department has agreed to cluster the newcomer students that are going into grade level ELA with our English teachers that are also ELD teachers, knowing that they're, they're strong in that area. We would like to continue to assign peer academic tutors. We currently have migrant tutors that support us and we'd like to put those tutors also in math and social studies and science when possible. We have, in the past, had a Rosetta Stone. We'd like to bring...
We'd like to bring that back and offer it during a zero period for our newcomer students. We have to update and we will update our designated ELD curriculum with our new ELD standards. Give some time to our ELD teachers too, to plan that curriculum, to align with formative and summative assessments. We have a lot of work here. Increase professional development, I've already mentioned that, with the ELD and ELA literacy standards, improve that monitoring process. We want to work with special education. One thing I didn't mention was that in those long-term English learners and looking at our special ed population, every single one of our special ed students is a long-term English learner. And so, they already in those IP, the students have language goals. So, it's important that we communicate on how to use those goals towards reclassification for those special ed ELs. And then finally, consider a specific counselor, regrouping our current students and allocation of students to designate one of our bilingual counselors to work with our parents and English learners. And that would support us with the, with the monitoring process. Any questions?
Questions?
Yes. Yes.
Cool.
So, when was our last official PD, professional development for ELD? With teachers like here on campus or availability, you know, rather than just sending a couple? Like, when was the last?
So, we had one in August, we had one in January, and then we also had one in, was it February, March? I don't know, we've had three this year.
And?
School, all, whole school, all, yeah.
Okay. Before that, though?
And before that, probably the year before, I believe.
So, we're?
I do something every year, but this year, we've done more because of the work on the standards.
I know that you've seen that that's like where we need to go, right? So, obviously, more.
So, we're continuing the work.
That was definitely a concern that I had, like, obviously, we need more P, more P. I also had another question, which apparently was a concern for you guys with the ELD standards being embedded into English language ours. Okay, so, if you're using an existing system, that's unembedded, right? And so, how to get that embedded? And in order to embed that, obviously, teacher, is there going to be a summertime opportunity for the teachers to get together to do this? Because, I mean, on top of what you have to teach, it's really hard to sit and do that. That has to be something completely separate with time and things like that. But, this is very easy to get away from. Does that make sense? Because people have things to do on their summers. It's obviously voluntary, it's not mandatory. Are we somehow, to me, that's huge, like, you, we got to get that going. And then, of course, I don't know, board, I'm going to recommend, you know, our ELs being stuck in that area. If we've now done well enough to move up to four, being now stuck in our fours, then we need to, I'm going to suggest that we definitely move forward on as much as we can to help our, help Ms. Kaplansky in moving forward to get those kids to five. Because again, we're only going to get more newcomers and we're really going to have more issues. And the embedded within, you know, if we can't get ourselves moving, kind of like we're saying is maybe we need to start thinking outside the box, finding better ways to adapt with these kids, get these kids to that next level. And so, I'm just going to speak for, you know, to suggest for all of us that I think this is a huge concern. And it's only going to better our CAT scores.
I have a question. How do you support PEELs, especially the new ones, in other classes? You know, when I first got here, that was called bilingual education. What do you do now?
Well, we, well, one, some of the things that we do is offer, have the peer tutors. What we did do when we noticed that grade, and you could see that in the report too, is we formed that world studies class specifically for newcomers and the biology class too, that which we've had a lot of success. That's one, that's one thing we've done. We've created these courses to support them with the, with an instructional aide. And then, where possible and where we, where we want to increase is putting out those tutors to assist them at least with their first language, so bilingual tutors to support them in the, in the content areas. Anything else I missed? The cost sharing is the other piece.
Are these peer tutors paid or are they voluntary?
It's a peer academic.
Peer academic.
Course.
A course.
Students, it's an approved course, students can get a letter grade for it and there's, they're unlike a TA, like a TA that would do, you know, sort of like secretarial type tasks for a teacher, they are supposed to make sure that they're actually supported. So, we have to strategically, you know, place these students because they have to be strong, like, we'll put them in a math class and we need to make sure that they've got strong math skills at our higher level math course. So, that, that's definitely, as Ms. Kaplansky mentioned, that's an area where we can definitely expand in an effort to support a lot of areas, not, you know, ELD and other students that are not starting, when they walk in, they're not playing on a level playing, they're not on a level playing field. So, we're looking, we're trying to get creative and innovative, how we can support those, those courses.
How's enrollment in that type of a class?
Well, it's not, it's not, it's not big. It's not big and one of the biggest reasons, it's not a bad reason, but one of the biggest reasons is those students are typically taking additional higher levels of math and aren't, you know, the competition to get into, those students are typically the students that are really competing to get into your high-level universities. So, they're trying to take as many high-level science and high-level math courses. So, when you offer, so that's why we're trying to figure out what, what's, what's going to, you know, how can we incentivize this course to attract those kids? Because those are the kids who are having the content knowledge and the experience and support.
And they have to speak the language.
But you're competing against them taking that course or taking Cal BC. Obviously, the student wants to get in. So, doesn't mean it's impossible, but we definitely have to change or adjust our approach to get, to expand those resources.
The migrant education program has been very, really helpful. They're able to recruit students and get them in there too.
To our known asset, maybe you can work with Elaine and Cindy, if you could, first of all, we're already doing, so, that one's off the list. If you prioritize the remaining mics, and, you know, what, what is the most bang for our dollars, so to speak, what is most important, critical to get off the deck so that we can start to see, you know, if that variable is, is making a benefit.
Okay.
And then we can all work together on getting that into the strategic.
Thank you.
If it's not already there.
That's amazing, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next is the EL reading presentation.
All right. So, I will go through this, and I know it says English Language Arts and Reading Intervention, but the main focus is going to be reading intervention. If you remember, this was one of the reports that we said we would bring back. If you remember this slide, back in, I believe, January, we talked about an academic focus, rigor, relevance and inclusion with seven academic priorities with English Language Arts and reading intervention being one of them. I know that the last board meeting, the division chair, Chris Alvarez, came and gave you a comprehensive report on English and the goals where the English department is going and, and where their current reality and where their scores are. So, tonight, we're going to focus mainly on the reading intervention piece. Some of the questions that we had originally were, is there a better structure to support these reading intervention students? It's very difficult, once you get to high school and your reading level is maybe not where it should be, on grade level, what do you do? What do you do to engage those students and how do we get them to the reading comprehension that they need in order to not only get what they need in their English classes, but also the content areas of science, social science, CTE areas and things of that sort? And needing to look at some more research-based alternatives so that we're not just pulling things from the sky, which we haven't been, I should say. This is the current intervention matrix that we use. I have the reading portion up there at the top. So, we have this because we typically have ninth and some 10th graders that go into the reading intervention course, which means that we are depending upon our feeder schools to determine whether or not these students are identified as needing a reading intervention. So, right now, because of the SBAQ scores and the fact that they're so new to us, it's been very difficult to determine just using those SBAQ scores. We have many students that are perfectly proficient and not doing very well on the SBAQ exam. So, that hasn't been a really clear indicator. So, what we've been using is their grade. How are they doing in their English classes? And a lot of it has also been teacher recommendation. That has been difficult, I will say, to get from the feeder schools and it's been very hard to identify exactly who should be in these reading intervention classes. The last box there where it says other criteria, that's a lexile level. That means the reading comprehension that the student is reading at, by the time you're at the end of 10th grade, you should be around thirteen hundred lexile. So, if you're under nine hundred, then you're going to need some help in order to access that vocabulary, that content needed. So, reading intervention courses, what do we have right now? We currently have two sections, it's only twenty-eight students. We know, looking at the students coming in from all of our feeder schools, that there are probably more than twenty-eight students that need this reading intervention. So, our challenge this year was identifying those students. But what we do know is that the twenty-eight that are there should be there. So, that's, that's a good thing. And we do use the, the matrix that I just showed you. We also are focusing strictly on reading comprehension and writing. Those seem to be the areas. We do not need phonemic awareness or things of that, that nature that are more elementary. The students know how to read and decode, they have a hard time comprehending what they're reading and they have a hard time putting their writing into coherent paragraphs that are high school level. We also have the curriculum that we're using and I wanted to make sure we really highlighted that. The SRI, which is the Scholastic Reading Intervention Progress Monitoring, is what we use to identify their lexile level. And at this point, that is really the only indication that we get when they first get it. That's one, first day of school, they give them the SRI exam to see where their lexile score is. From that point, we do use Nuzella, which is a new online program. If you remember the years prior, we were reading, using Read 180 and we found that to not be very user-friendly for our students and it just, they were plateauing, it wasn't really working. The Nuzella, which I will show you a very short clip, has built-in assessments. It's strictly expository, non-fiction text, which you're going to see a lot of. And through the Common Core standards, what we do know is that as the years progress, we want our students seeing and reading more expository text. We also have built-in adopted novels that the ninth grade classes are not currently using, so it is an outside novel to get that literature piece in there for that comprehension as well. What I do want to say is that this is not another English course. This course is designed so that these strategies, these skills that the students are learning would transcend through all content areas. So, let's see, wait, don't go yet. Let me see if I can get this. Because I don't want you to see all of it, I just want to show you a quick little clip so you have an idea of what the students are exposed to. And I don't know if you can hear it, but we'll try. Let us first take a look at quizzes and how they help you assess your students. Every article is published and five reading orders from grades two through twelve. Nuzella is continuously assessing each student's reading ability in order to deliver the article to each student at the just right reading level for each one of them. To test critical thinking and close reading skills, each quiz question is aligned with a specific reading standard. When you attach an article to the class, you can view the class's quiz results in your binder. You'll see the quiz average, number of students who completed the quiz, how many students have viewed the article, and so much more. Another feature that we offer is highlighting and annotation. Our research has shown that students who actively engage by highlighting and annotating the text they are reading perform better on Nuzella quizzes. We found that teacher annotations help lead students to a deeper examination of the text. With Nuzella Pro, teachers can share their annotations with students to ask appropriate questions, maybe start a conversation, and then view the student responses in their binder. Write is a feature that allows teachers to use or create a short answer or essay question and receive written responses from their students. Every Nuzella article includes a write prompt. You can use our write prompt or create your own. You'll be able to edit the written response question for your students. When a student submits his or her write response, it is available in the teacher binder for you to review. With Nuzella Pro, you can view the student's write response, comment and give the response a grade. So, that was just a short clip I wanted you to see so you can see what some of the curriculum that they're using and how it is much more age-appropriate than the Read 180 was, as well as the fact that they do have built-in assessments. Going into the assessments, I wish I could show you some of those, but we just don't have enough data since the program is so new. So, I would hope that at the beginning of next year, I know that Mr. Ramirez does an intervention report or he did one, I believe, last August or September. We will have some of that data, although it'll be preliminary, we'll be able to bring that back to you. What we do have is our lexile scores. I wanted to show at least a three-year trend. And you can see previously, we were looking at Read 180. But with all three, with both programs, we have used the SRI, which gets that lexile score for us. And you can see, although we only have twenty-eight students, we do have more students that are climbing past that nine hundred point within our lexile levels while using the Nuzella. However, looking at that, it doesn't look like it's translating over into the English grade. So, although they may be performing better on the SRI, which is only one factor, only one determination, we are not seeing their grade in English specifically go up. I didn't bring data about how all their other courses are going, but I did take a peek at it. And I can tell you that the English grade is what I was looking at the most because that is where you're going to have the most reading and writing as well. What I do know is that it is our first year and I would like to see the embedded assessments that I just showed you as far as that video so that we can see and we can monitor how those students are doing. So, what are our strengths? What do we know? We do know that the students are more engaged in the curriculum that we're currently using. I know that because the two teachers that are collaborating, we have Mr. Shores and Ms. Brown, they are very strong collaborators and their classrooms are right next door to each other and they both taught reading intervention prior. And they said that this is much better than what they were using before. So, that's feedback from the teacher's standpoint. We know that we are showing more reading comprehension with the SRI, but it is only one exam. So, I don't want to get too excited about it until we see that growth across all areas. And we do know that the students that are currently in the program were identified properly. We just know that we probably need more students in those sections. So, some of our obstacles, identifying those students, like I stated, we do need to have better articulation with our feeder schools. Currently, we have two sections slated for next year. I can tell you and Ms. Crocker, please speak up if I'm wrong here, but typically, we've had four sections before. And this year, we had two and this coming year for seventeen, eighteen, we'll have two. So, I do think we need to have some clearer identification with our feeder schools. One of the things that Ms. Grissom and I talked about is possibly having our ninth grade English folks, the first week of school, identify some students they think might be struggling and give them the SRI so that we internally start to show students that may need that extra assistance and we can do a schedule change very quickly. Keeping students motivated is always very difficult. Progress monitoring, we would like to designate some, some specific skills and targets that we can really look at, that are tied to standards that we can assess on a more regular basis. Clear exit criteria. So, right now, we're using lexile levels, but I do think that we need something more and something that students can work towards so that they have, they know there's a way for me to get out of this class rather than it just being, I'm here the entire year. And we do have the struggle that there are some students that need both English and math support and math trumps English. So, sometimes we do have students out there that need this support as well and just are not, we just don't have enough room in a schedule to give us. So, our next steps, we are already working with our feeder schools to identify if there are any other students out there aside from just their, their English grade. We still have some time still. We can start looking at the SBAQ since this is our third year giving it now, so hopefully the scores will be a little bit more of an indicator. Like I mentioned before, having our ninth grade teachers start to just assess the first week of school if there are any students that should take the SRI. Like I mentioned, developing an exit criteria, I'm going to be working with the two intervention teachers to see if we can get some clearer, some clearer ideas about what to do for that next year. Research some progress monitoring tools. I know that Mr. Shores has already done some research and sent some things over to me to look at some sort of outside monitoring that we can do with the Common Core standards and exactly the skills that they're working on and that would help us with data. Increasing the sections if we need to, right now, we only have two. And then, also working with our bell schedule committee to see if the interventions that come about possibly with that committee, what that would look like for our reading intervention as well. Any questions?
So, right now, is the, is the only criteria that's used to form the classes coming out in eighth grade, is just looking at eighth grade English grades, is that?
And teacher recommendation.
Okay.
I can tell you that previously, the feeders, I can say Rancho had a reading intervention class as well. And if those students were not exited, they were automatically put into the reading intervention, but they know- but they no longer have a reading intervention class. I don't know about Mays, but those are the two largest feeder schools that typically will give us names.
So, that might account for the rather dramatic change?
Correct, correct.
Couple of questions, Newzella, free or paid?
Paid, paid. That was the Newzella Pro. You can get like a free sample of Newzella, and it's very limited. And they, I believe they piloted a bit, a bit, if I'm not mistaken, last year, and really liked it, and that's why we bought the Newzella Pro.
Um, how long does the SRI take?
Good question, I don't know.
It depends on their Lexile score.
Well, I know it, like, it, it rises with them until they're done, correct? Why not do, uh, if there are Chromebooks for every child in the class, why not, in your first couple of days of your freshman English, you screen the whole class? I mean, why is that my part?
That, well, it was a thought, but I believe we, I don't know, don't we have a certain number of licenses and licenses per set of?
Very expensive.
I didn't know, I didn't know if that's, once you pay for it, it's whatever, but it's per test then?
Which is why I thought we can at least identify, within my thirty-five students I have right now, these two in block one, and these five in block two, or have, I've identified they've already had some, some problems. We can give them the SRI and see where they score, and then go from there, rather than doing the blanket just for the licenses. Yeah.
Why, okay, so it's teacher recommendation, right? How about, like, you know you have scheduling day at the feeder schools, right? Where you're scheduling? Why can't you get a recommendation that day?
So, we do. That's, that's where we get the recommendations that we have for the.
But you said they're not very good. So, if they're not very good at getting that, is that because they're not identifying, or they refuse?
I think there's some teacher bias involved sometimes. There are some teachers that want them to get a fresh start in high school, want them to get into electives, uh, feel they should be in academies. I mean, there's some bias involved just based on, um, you know, what they see as what they were.
And you have to remember that there, some of those students are also students that struggle in math. So, math really does trump the reading part.
Yeah, initially, I had audiobooks with a question mark, right? Until I got into this, and I'm like, oh, yeah, that's not going to work. Okay.
That's why I wanted to show you a little snip of the curriculum, so you can see how comprehensive it is.
Yeah.
So, Elaine, when you say that the math trumps the, the reading intervention, do you, do you mean that because of the number of classes, if they're deficient in math, they're going to take a math support class?
Do you want to consider?
As opposed to intervention?
Yeah, actually, it does, the way we, when we, as we've evolved the, uh, the matrix for intervention course, at the very, you know, so you've got your students in, um, special education, the priorities to get them into the special education type intervention. Then you've got your English language learners, those are obviously, um, very specific. Then you've got reading. Reading actually would, the way we've set it up is that it, it, reading would trump math. However, as, as Mrs. Power talked, we have a lot of, it's very common to have students that are in need of both interventions. The way we've got the matrix is that reading, the reading intervention would trump the math, but in most cases, they need both. Um, and then that's when it gets really difficult, because, um, you've got students locked into, especially the freshman year, to double-block, like, a, the content, um, course, and then also the intervention course.
Okay, so it's hard to, hard to have them take both, I was kind of.
Just not enough room in the schedule to get them to.
We, we've done it in some cases in the past, and, oh, it, it, it hasn't circled the student well, you know, um, so.
If you're looking to build, build an intervention period within the day, couldn't a child attend both? There's five days, right? They go three days, two days, one week, three days, two days, end of week, opposite class, and you're supporting both areas.
Lots of freedom with that.
Correct.
So, are we still trying to move in that since our trips?
That's why I put it as a next step, because although we're still digging into what we have as a current structure, we also want to look outside the box and be innovative in thinking about how can we service? Um, and that, that won't happen tomorrow, so we need to continue on this path. But it definitely is in the conversation for the bell schedule committee. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Here, next, agenda items, facility update, and that's.
Johnny B, is that load on this?
Just making sure.
Yeah. Well, good evening once again, trustees. And, um, it's my privilege and honor to go ahead and present tonight's, um, facilities planning, uh, presentation with Mr. Joe Bella. Um, I appreciate Adam being here tonight. Thank you, Adam, for taking the time. And, um, we've had a lot of, uh, meetings, a series of meetings to gather input. Uh, appreciate Roseanne's help, and Rob's help, and all of the teachers, and staff members, and directors, and administrators, to kind of get where we are today. Um, and so, what we're going to do tonight is we're going to run through, uh, some of our projects, um, that we are moving forward with, as far as kind of a recap. Uh, but the bulk of the meeting, and when we, uh, decide to, to really get into the meat and potatoes, if you will, is determining site locations for our future projects with measure of funding, uh, as well as, uh, provide you with some information regarding the input that we have gathered through the process, um, uh, with the PE and athletic facilities, uh, and possible configurations, so that we can start the next steps as an administrative group to take action with ATIS, uh, potentially block, and other, um, companies to start to move those things forward, um, and get those out of, uh, the mere talking phase, but into the design phase, and actually starting to move each project. Any job?
Well, thank you, Mr. Townebaum. Well, thank you, uh, it's a pleasure to be back again. Um, as Mr. Townebaum said, we've had quite a number of meetings, uh, in respect to where we're going, uh, based on our last conversation here at the board meeting, and, and how we move forward. So, just a little bit of recap of what's happening this summer, just to, just to remind you. North of Nash, we're going to be modernizing, uh, the classrooms, with the exception of the one-eighties and one-nineties, uh, rooms. Uh, we're bringing those up to the level of the, the three-hundred swings. Uh, we'll be doing some ADA upgrades, uh, some site work, uh, outside, replacing concrete, and, and, uh, making sure the thresholds meet the requirements of the code. Um, there was discussion about the staff lounge, and we'll get into a slide about that. Uh, we'll do restroom upgrades, and, uh, um, automate, automate the, uh, the door to the back of the administration building, uh, with the push-button style automation, so those doors open automatically. And then one of the other things we're doing throughout the campus is, is adding the PA system in all the classrooms throughout the campus, so that you can actually hear in the past, hear, uh, announcements that are, that are happening. Uh, and please, please feel free to ask any questions, if you, if you have any, while we're, while we're making this presentation, and, uh, we can move forward from it. So, um, one of the discussions that, uh, we had was with the sped, and we brought that back to the board at the, at the last meeting, about the, about the cost and, and that. But the sped is going to, the sped expansion in the two-sixty-seven will happen, uh, this summer, with potentially, uh, a future expansion happening in two-sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-eight, and sixty-nine, uh, down the road. We'll be modernizing, as part of this summer's work, the, the restrooms and, and two-seventy, and the life skills modernization as well, uh, in the sped area. And the staff lounge came up, uh, at the last meeting. I believe we brought this to you before, we met with staff. Uh, there was some discussion, uh, regarding locations and, and where things could be. Uh, in the end, the, the real driving factor is the existing utilities here, um, and creating the men's and women's restrooms on where they're at, because they're, they downhill from the restrooms that are currently there, and you need that utility, you need those utilities to work properly, and to minimize funds there. So, uh, the staff lounge works on that side as well, because it's back-to-back with all the utilities. Um, and then, uh, the exterior courtyard, um, can, depending on, uh, the desires of, of staff and the administration, um, if we decide to push that forward, that's a great location for, for that area, not blocking the exterior entrances that could be anywhere else, so. But i- in the staff lounge, of course, we would have a little kitchenette, um, a TV, which is the direction the district's going with, all new finishes, and, and access to the restrooms as well. So, uh, the Nash Road closure, um, is currently at the city right now for review. We've actually met with them, and, uh, we're starting the discussion, and I believe we're meeting with them again, uh, sometime soon. I'm getting the nod over here from, uh, from Elise in the corner, thank you. Uh, she's been leading those discussions with the city, um, about the process of approval. So, all we need to do now is, is figure out what the city wants for their review, and bring that back, and so we can formally submit that. Right now, it's in there just for, um, just for their initial input and, and, and discussion, and we can move that forward. So, that is an upcoming project. We haven't put a date to it as of yet, um, just until we, till we get those, uh, initial comments back from them to talk about what they want to see from us, for us, for the formal review.
Joe, on this, you're showing the gate going all the way across the pull width of the, the street there. At one point, we talked about trying to, um, I don't know what you call it, but minimize the width of the road by putting some calming, um, things and narrowing down the road.
Yes, yes.
Is that still part of the plan?
So, that is still part of the plan. This is an older edition, and I, and I apologize for that. We could have, um, changed this, does this work, I'm assuming? I forgot what the.
Can I not put the, uh, do my?
Do my? I was just trying to get the laser on, I said, that didn't work. So, there is a bike lane that is, um, right here.
Uh-huh.
Uh, and that will be opened up. We also have traffic congresses. Uh, we, we don't really show them here because it gets into the details, but we do narrow down the street. Um, the, the gate actually narrows down to allow bikes to pass, uh, actually on both sides. Um, the, the one on the, on the right side of this picture is, is not really a bike lane, but it's just, it's just wide enough for somebody to kind of squeeze through if they, they really needed to.
Right.
Through the, through the curb cut, thank you. Um, but the bike lane will continue to, to exist on, at both ends of the closed-off section. Mr. Rabelato?
Yeah, which way will this gate swing?
The gate will swing into the campus.
Okay, now, that means clearing out students as it swings, but it's only going to be in the morning, and at seven PM, right? So.
Uh, the, the, yeah, the, the MOU states seven to seven, I believe it is. Um, and, uh, maybe if you can correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, but.
Correct.
Yeah, it's, uh, gonna, gonna swing in. Um, there are, uh, when it does swing, there will be, there will be lights. These, uh, um, these lights, uh, right here, um, will, will go off as well. They'll be connected to the gate's operating system, so that when they're open, those lights will be flashing as well. But we need to work with the traffic engineers that, to help us design and connect all those things together, so they actually, uh, start flashing when they, when they work, but, uh.
So, the, the gates will be, if there's a crosswalk, the gates will be before the crosswalk, right?
So, that, that, so, we need to work with the city on that, and that's one of the reasons why we're into the city, because there's an existing crosswalk that's there, there, um, and we can't necessarily block that crosswalk unless the city determines that we're okay, because we can, we can't be too close to the corner as well. So, there are some discussions that we need to have with the city to flush those details out with what they will allow us to do, uh, for that, for that crosswalk that's there.
I was just saying, the only one giving you language on that, or the county?
So, my understanding is that the county has deferred to the city for approval.
Okay.
And, um, and we can, and we're going to be working with them to flush out those issues, and, and what's going to be allowed. It's kind of a tricky situation, because of, we, we've almost got a dual crosswalk, if you will, because there's a crosswalk in front of the gate, because right now, if we put the clo, the gate too close to the corner, I don't think the city's going to allow us to do that, just because of, uh, traffic reasons. But if we put it back, we got it, we got another problem. So, we need to work through those, through those discussions with the city.
It would seem to me, unless, you know, people coming from the, um, three-fifties and three-sixties are going to come now to go past the gate to make the right turn across the street. If they cross in front of that gate, it gets, they'll be zapped or something. But Joe Citizen is going to have to stay on this side, because if he goes on the other side, he would be on our campus, right?
Right, right.
So, something's got to be.
Yeah. So, those, those are, that's definitely the details that we need to, uh, one of the details we need to work with, through the city, on that.
So, uh, Joe, the, the tentative idea is that the, the flashing crossing light, that would be activated when the gates are open?
When the gates move, when the, when the gates are moving, so. Um, so, yeah, they, they would be, they would, they would flash when, say, say, for instance, emergency vehicle came through, uh, the, the, the lights would start flashing when the, when those gates were operating in, in, for a, a set timeframe, till those gates, uh, were shut again.
And we're going to tell those emergency vehicles not to go through when there's students crossing, right?
Well, that's, that's the, that's the idea.
Open emergencies during strike.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and another question, where, where does it stand in discussions about what would happen with respect to evening, evening activities, where, you know, people are crossing the street a lot?
I, I can, we, we were told we could, uh, request a permit for those on, on, as they occur from the city, for weekends or, or evenings.
Basketball game.
Yeah.
So, this is the Aggie Student Union conversion. Uh, currently, as I reported to the, to the board, uh, at the last session, is that, um, we are at DSA with this project. Uh, there was, uh, some feedback regarding the code issues, and we're meeting with them again here in the very near short, uh, short term to, to show them the ideas about how we're meeting the new codes and, and changing the occupancy of, of this building. Uh, we also met with staff and determined that, uh, that this renovation did not need to happen currently, um, coming up this summer or in the fall, um, because staff is, is, um, secure where they're at, uh, meaning, uh, the athletic department, as well as, uh, the, the trainer and ASB, thank you. Um, they are currently being housed in the portables, um, that are, um, three-seventies, I believe it is.
Three-twenty.
Three-twenty, um, out by the, uh, transportation department. And everybody is, is happy there, it sounds like. And so, we can defer this building. Um, the work still needs to be done to do the upgrades, to, to do the restrooms, but we're going to defer this building to a bigger project, which would be the, the expansion of, and the building of ASB offices, along with, uh, potentially a kitchen, or, or a snack bar, or, uh, and the athletic, and athletic facilities, uh, for, uh, Mr. Thatcher and his team, um, and who they've worked very closely with, ASB, and, uh, their staff there, so. Um, so, if we, if we combine, uh, the student union with that building, it'll be a much bigger project, um, potentially, uh, some cost savings to, to do so.
We're still going with the kitchen inside? I've said before that we need snack bars, serving areas, but no kitchen, because, uh, we have a kitchen over here, considered state-of-the-art with the cold storage walk-in, and food storage, they even kicked out the, uh, teacher's lounge. And what I'm afraid of, and I said this when we met, uh, with, uh, you, is that, uh, ASB's going to get such a small room that that central choir area will be the main painting area. And maybe when we build, think of quotes, I'll help them out. So, it's not going to do any good. When I was looking at that angle, and I thought, whoa, that'll be plenty of room in case it rains, I'll be, that'll be a great place to deal with. But a new kitchen here would not be something that we shouldn't even spend money on, because that, two million dollars could be used for fields out in the athletic area, where kids are twisting their ankles and doing all that. Where a new kitchen isn't necessary. Uh, the kitchen we have right now could possibly take care of the entire, uh, or will take care of the entire campus.
I, I.
So, as I go looking at that big kitchen serving, I keep thinking, I keep seeing it there. So, I think we're really bent on spending the two million dollars, and that bugs me as a board member and, because we were really looking at classrooms and maybe PE facilities, and we weren't looking at upgrading our kitchen utensils and kitchen, uh, utilities and all that. So, I, I really would like to see us get away from kitchen and just keep calling it a snack bar.
So, uh, trustee Rabelato, you brought up some really good points when we met earlier. And so, the, there's two, there's two, uh, areas that we need to explore. One is, can our current kitchen, uh, the way it is, actually produce enough food and get out for, uh, population growth, one? Um, and two, can we service all of the snack bars? Say, uh, we have a snack bar in the four-hundreds, we'll need to put a couple more in. We'll need to drop, uh, you know, two more. We'll need to drop, you know, two more over there when we put in our new classroom for growth or science. Now, do we have the actual capability in that space now or do we need to upgrade? Those are the things that we're looking into now is, can that kitchen serve a growing student population and be more of a mobile kitchen? Because we'll have to produce everything and then shift it to all the locations on campus. So...
And as I said before, if you look at Hollister Elementary, they ship their food to every school site and they're miles away. If you go look at where Gatlin Hills is and Lat Lane and Saravista and all these other places, we're talking about yards away. And this kitchen over here, if it needs upgrading, I could see us doing that, adding a few more stoves and ovens. But to me, I feel like a new kitchen requires an expensive investment that I would rather see, measure, I'd rather see measure U funds going into upgrading our fields and doing all the repairs that staff was looking at. That $2 million will do a lot of work out there. And our PE facilities right now aren't exactly the greatest. And then, we're talking about softball field upgrades and all that. I just don't feel that a new kitchen is going to help us at this point and I don't know if it was part of measure U, was it?
I don't think we listed specific projects, it was just overall.
But kitchen, we listed things that were student oriented, PE oriented, but we don't have to cook anymore. We can cook over here and when they upgraded this, they did a lot of changes that really inconvenienced us. And a lot, and you still have that whole cafeteria area. You could expand in there a little bit, make the kitchen a little bigger. But to build a new kitchen is, to me, a total waste of measure U funds. And I would rather see them go to the students than the cooks.
So, the two areas that we'll bring back to the board on this particular project, because remember, one of the things that we've recommended to the board is that we delay moving in our ASB director, our athletic director and all of those folks. Because we just simply don't need to do that. So, we're gonna be able to save some funds there, do a larger project. Would be the feasibility to determine whether or not that kitchen can do what we need it to do.
And the snack bar will do...
No, 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 that kitchen behind you.
On this one?
Yeah.
Okay, then we need to start getting...
Right, we'll get the feasibility, we'll bring it back for the next...
A bigger way to expand it.
Right, so, whether it's an expansion, what the cost of upgrade's gonna be and do a cost analysis to determine whether or not that is a true kitchen that can serve all of that. And we'll bring that back to the next construction meeting.
Well, of course, with cold storage and their food storage. I mean, it drove me out of the student, out of the staff lounge.
No, it was great input that you brought forward. So, we'll take a look at that and we'll bring those numbers back to the cost analysis.
The kitchen, the kitchen, they have the money wasted on that, sort of spent on it, it won't be wasted.
So, that, so, one of the buildings we, we talked about at the last meeting was a new science building and moving it to essentially the south of, south of Nash. Because north of Nash just didn't seem to be the direction that the district wanted to go. Moving it center of campus, southward, if you will. And one of the areas that was discussed with staff was the area adjacent to the 400s building next to, in between the 500s. And the reason this location is a prime location is because there are existing utilities that are currently out there and that were stubbed out during the build of the 400s wing. And so, it would substantially decrease underground utility costs, getting to those, getting to, getting utilities to a new building. So, the idea is to put a 12-classroom science lab building somewhere out in the, out in the area between, excuse me, between the 500s and the 400s wing. This is a snack bar that's currently out there. Now, subsequent to us producing this slide and the location that was distributed to the board and staff, we met with the science instructors. And they really liked the idea of having a double-loaded corridor with prep rooms in between the classrooms. And so, we need to start investigating that. And but what that, what that does is puts the, having a, having a building in this location and opening up the quad area to the 500s. So, it really does open this area up and this building wouldn't be right here, but it would be more down in this, in this location right here. Nonetheless, and we can bring that back to the next, to the next board meeting, but this just happened last Thursday and this presentation was already, already completed. But a 12-classroom, 12-classroom science building with, with prep spaces and all the amenities of your labs would be inclusive in that building.
So, excuse me, what are the, what were the teachers concerned or what did they want?
So, the, the idea was that, that we have a prep room that's central, a centralized space. So, you can access the prep room from the science classrooms from both sides. So, it'd be classrooms on one side, classrooms on the other side with the prep room in the middle, right? So, that would, that would eliminate having what we call a single-loaded corridor with classrooms on one side and prep areas. And so, we'll come back to the board with a, with an initial plan of what we're, what we're thinking about and kind of the idea that came out of that, out of that meeting with the science teachers as well.
Is that, is that upper image, is that, is that like the second?
That's like the second floor, yeah, yeah. So, it would still be a two-story classroom, two-story classroom building with, with a common prep area, if you will, and storage and all the amenities of a science, a science lab.
Now, that L shape is a two-story L-shaped building.
Yes.
On this other one, it has two L shapes facing each other.
Yeah, so, that is the next slide, which is, which is the, which is the growth building. So, the growth building, there was, there is a, an idea right now that's out there of to potentially reuse the plan of the Vapa building if that is going to work. The Vapa building has actually 14 classrooms and a dance studio. But nonetheless, the size and the shape of the building actually lends itself to a reuse of plans, if you will, which would help save time, money and design fees. If we were to essentially reuse those plans, make some modifications because on the first floor, of course, is are all the art studios, but on the second floor, there's seven classrooms. So, if, I mean, if it was mirrored down below, you actually almost have 14 classrooms instead of 12. Plus, you have the dance studio, which could be staff lounge or it could be a collaborative type space. It could be broken up into snack bar, a larger snack bar that could be used. So, that building does lend itself to a reuse of plans, but the L shape is similar to the cell shape that you see here. And that is where it could go with the modification to the science wing that would go right next to it in this area right here. I think we fit in nicely.
Ask a question.
Sure.
I was under the impression when we met that it was more like flat along the road there and then an L as opposed to cutting off the walkway there. Do you see how it frames the admin building? But I was under the impression that it went more down that way and then up the other way, so towards the new road. So, down and then over. So, one says kind of down, I don't know, it's on the wall. Yeah, so, like, the little part, right? Like here, you go that way, right? And then this part come that way so that this remains open?
Right, and that's the idea of a double-loaded corridor. That would open, that would open, it would open up that space so that does remain open. Like I said, the slide was made by Thursday when we had the meeting and it was already this...
And then my, another concern is, I mean, I love all the new buildings. Are we gonna stick with something that resembles the other buildings? Because if you're gonna make this one more like the Vapa building and the CTE building looks like a barn and then this one's gonna have its own shape. And then, we have all these classrooms who are in this area that are similarly shaped. We're gonna look like a hodgepodge of weirdness. Does that make sense? Are we looking into making this coherent or something that flows nicely together?
So, there's two aspects and Trusty, I mean, you bring up a really good point is making sure that we're architecturally consistent. So, each of the buildings, obviously, your CTE building is gonna be different.
And I love that.
Right.
But I'm talking about, the plans look very, very, very Spanish style and they're very modern and then they're, you know, it's just not...
Right, well, I think what you're looking at are some AIGIS depictions of what could be rather than what will be. So, we need to understand that when we look at our...
That's all I see, so...
Absolutely, and those are, you know, when we have a concept drawing from AIGIS, they're showing you what, you know, possibly is out there or what they've done. Rather than what we are doing in the visual performing arts building and the social science building, which is the Spanish-style architecture, which fits nicely, kind of blends into our current architecture. And we look really nice to have the same building on that side, you know, if not...
Because those buildings to look there aren't very Spanish, you know? And the front of our school is very, I don't know, Greece-looking, I guess, in the right eye. I don't know how else to say the front of it. And then you go behind it, you know, so I don't know, I don't necessarily see that.
Yeah, we're gonna try to be as consistent architecturally as we can so that there is uniformity. But we also want to make sure that, you know, we're aesthetically, we have a nice aesthetically looking building, curb appeal. But what we're more worried about are the guts inside, you know, as far as that. So, we make sure our teachers have those amenities. So, we will do everything we can to match building for building. And that's one reason why we're recommending that we replicate a plan. One, it's gonna save us time, energy and money, but it's also going to have the same feel and look, almost identical.
So, science as well then possibly?
Absolutely.
Okay, and then I was concerned about the snack bar on that side of campus because I did make mention in the meeting that literally on this side of campus, there's no food available. And if you're building all these buildings and you're sticking all these kids over here, all kids ever wanna do is eat. And right now, they can't get to the places to eat and a lot of them aren't eating. So, that was a big concern for me is that you gotta put food around this campus for these kids because...
And that was another piece of good information. So, when we look at shifting the hub of campus to where we are with Nash, as we start to move our buildings down and the CTE building is complete. And we start to add, let's say, the science building and the new classroom growth building, we're gonna see that we need more snack bars. So, we're planning and prepping for that now. We have a dance studio that's in the current building that's going in. Could that be a snack bar? You know, is that a large enough facility to house? So, what we wanna be is very smart strategic...
And there is a snack bar in that, the vault building too.
So, you know, we wanna be strategic about that.
So, that would be the first one because the Aggie building is being deferred now, you know what I mean? The, not, not the new CTE building, the Aggie building being deferred. All those classrooms and all those kids are coming over there, so thank God there's a snack bar. But literally, you know, for the CTE already, there's no way for those kids to get food. They're gonna go all the way down...
There's a snack bar right there on the...
That itty-bitty one, but I'm just saying, right now, that barely houses the kids on that campus. So, you've got more CTE kids coming in, it's a very, very small facility. And then, you're gonna be bringing in, you know, I'm just, just to be honest, I mean, my kids doesn't get much food on this campus. I don't know if you and teachers agree, but they can't get to the food in time. The food sells out wherever they're at, it's not available, so they're not eating. And that doesn't help for studying and it doesn't help for, for doing well in class. So, we don't, and all kids like to do is eat. So, we gotta start providing food for these children.
I gotta, maybe it's premature, but what's, I mean, I like, I like this new idea of kind of like moving more buildings over to the, you know, the other side, the south side of Nash. But is there any kind of plans for, say, like, the, where the science classrooms and labs are at the present time? I'm sure there is.
Yep, and we'll go back if we're... So, great question, Trusty Tiffany. And I've explained to quite a few folks that as we go, the sequencing of our projects is critical. So, one reason why we're choosing south of Nash is because we're not displacing teachers, we're not interrupting the academic learning environment and we have the amenities. So, we have those. So, if we're building the, the science building over here, which is our recommendation to the trustees and the new classroom growth building, as that science building is complete, let's say that's the first in the ground and it gets off the, the sequencing first as far as prioritization. Then, we're gonna be able to free up our 240s, which you'll see one, two, three, four, five, six classrooms there, seven classrooms, excuse me, and then the 180s. Which then could possibly, at the same time, when we look at our sequencing, with our special education movement and the expansion into the 260s, we can now displace our teachers because we have availability to keep them together if that's what we so desire. So, the sequencing of that, moving our science teachers over, moving our English teachers out, should happen simultaneously if we plan accordingly. That way, everybody's together.
Didn't Dr. Ruth give us an email this afternoon?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, and I met with Dr. Ruth and explained all of that to him.
That made no sense.
This answers some of the questions you had as part of...
That is essential, so...
Yeah, we, we think, you know, with student growth, one of the things that we've thought about and the administration's been very positive of looking forward is, if we do have the student growth anticipated down the road, our English department is our largest department. Every student on campus takes English, no matter what, regardless of who they are. So, what we need to do is we need to plan for growth in that department. They have, what, 21, 22 teachers, so it'll start to add and we need to make sure we have that availability.
Okay, before we go there, can we go back a third?
This one, one?
Yeah, I have a question on that. Do you see, let's see, the, the north campus that houses the 200s, the 250s and all that has the senior mound, the swell mound, it's got the flagpole. And then, eventually, that swimming pool won't be there, so that's probably gonna be some sort of walk area or something.
That'll be the corridor.
Which is a good transportation route. And then, as you go toward the tennis courts and that other quad area, you've got open, you've got, that's in the 400s area. You've got all that open, then all of a sudden, you got a wall there. So, I'm wondering, you see the science room, the science classrooms there, the L-shaped ones? Now, are we gonna turn them enough so that we have a continuing quad?
Yeah, that's what we're, that's what we're, that's what we'll bring back to the next board meeting to kind of show you a footprint of where, where that is.
I've been having trouble trying to figure out how to turn it, you know, because it doesn't seem to have a roof.
So, this would be a thoroughfare, so you'd be able to look straight down.
Okay, good, because I'm afraid of things like crying, you know?
Right, right, right.
You know, the type of...
That would open that up.
Yeah, that would definitely open that up. And I think that was, that was brought up as, you know, helping out that situation and making that more of an open space.
So, good questions and definitely, you know, more for us to explore. But I think as far as looking at where we are now, we'll go back one, is, our recommendation is to go ahead and move that science building south of Nash as well as the new classroom growth building. And complete the staff lounge this summer as well as this fed expansion as well as the projects that we just described. So, those are our recommendations thus far. Okay.
So, moving on to the physical education facilities, we, we met with staff and the administration and talked about a number of different options for what the PE facilities could be. And, and putting them in their existing locations, putting them in, in locations, you know, on the opposite side of the service road. In the end, we, we, we kind of did a combination of all of the above and really kind of worked through some of the, the details of this. So, we had a better idea of what, what was available to us, what was, what were some of the pros and cons of each. We came up with, with, with a couple different options and there's four in the packet here that, that need to be massaged as we move forward. But option 1A, we show the track and field in a similar position that it's in currently with the home side being on the south side of the track and field where it existing is. But we move it, we move it away from San Benito, and this is San Benito Road right here, and add, extend the existing parking lot down. And we'll have to work on that configuration, but the, if we extend the existing parking lot down, we almost get a third more parking for any event that's going on out there. Now, this is one configuration, like I said, a pool could be in this area, which would have access to the student parking lot. And in addition to this, we were asked to explore the idea of creating a practice field. So, that practice field could be on the other side of the service road. But when we do this configuration over here, we, we, we end up taking up four baseball, or three baseball, three baseball fields and softball fields. And so, we have to replace those. So, a softball field would be needed right here, actually to help compliance with Title IX. And then, another practice field here and a practice field here. Or this area could be synthetic turf in the middle for, for soccer or lacrosse or field hockey, et cetera. One of the big ideas that came up and one of the, the ideas that was, made note to us was that the county and the MOU gave us the location of the county parking lot, which they preferred, which actually worked out pretty nicely for the facility. And this area right here was the, I wanna say the preferred area, is that, is that kind of the discussion? And so, that kind of worked... Um, and so that kinda works with all the schemes that we're, that we're talking about. Um, there was also a need for an additional little parking lot, um, close to the track and field for staff during events. Um, so we thought we'd add a, add a, uh, a parking lot in there. And then an area for Ag to have, uh, cause the Ag barn is this, is this building right here, but, uh, the animals need a place to, um, to turn out, if you will, so they're not always on concrete. So they need some soft surface area, and we, uh, thought we could throw in, uh, a nice, small, uh, little pasture in that area as well.
So one of the things that I would share with the board, and we've had many discussions on this, is, is not every project, and you'll see every, uh, different option in here, is there is some mobility of a particular project. For example, uh, when we look at the Ag pasture, it doesn't have to necessarily be there. In different conversations, you know, we've, uh, get your little point there. Um, we've taken a look at, uh, kind of cutting and splitting this parking lot in half, so to speak. Um, and there you go.
Yeah.
And it might not go vertically down, but it would actually, uh, be right next to the Ag barn, so it has accessibility, and the animals don't have to cross the road, the students don't have to cross the road, et cetera. So when we look at each of the projects and, and the options, uh, in meeting with Mr. Goldstone and, and the team, uh, definitely this is the preferred location of the county parking lot, uh, but it doesn't necessarily have to be there. But what we wanna do is be a good partner. That is something that we wanna make sure happens, uh, so that over time, when we're building this, you know, that we have each piece in its exact place, um, and we're moving strategically down a path. The other thing that I would like to point out to the board is, in all of the discussions that I've had regarding, uh, looking at where our fault line lies, uh, one of the things that we're looking at in some of the options is placing our aquatic complex right on top of the fault line. So it's one of the things that I would, um, when we look at options, um, keep in mind because that is, uh, and could be a mitigating factor, um, as we move forward, so.
So that was, so, uh, thanks, Mr. Talanbaum, but, and this was the second option with the Ag, the Ag pasture. That's the only difference here is the county parking lot, of course, it can move, but the Ag, uh, pullout area, turnout area, if you will, is right next to the Ag barn, uh, not on the other side of the service road. So option, option B, uh, this is, uh, the vertical option that, uh, turns the track north-south, um, and, uh, and puts the pool right next to it. Um, there is, uh, so what, so, so the difference, the difference here is that the pool and the poolhouse and the facilities, um, actually, the, the poolhouse could be flipped so that the, the team rooms are closer to the home site bleachers and have easy access to the track and field. And, uh, we actually flipped that, unfortunately didn't make it into this slide. Uh, but the practice field's still on this side, um, with the Ag pasture, and that, and that could be moved as well. But like Mr. Talanbaum said, the pool is a little closer to the, to the fault line here, but we still have a softball, we're, we're still displacing three softball fields, and, and we'd be replacing them in these locations here.
Now, the fault line, uh, are you worried about the water or the dressing room?
So what I'm worried about, and one of the discussions that we've had, is if we take a look at the closer proximity we are with our aquatic complex to, to the fault line, and we're looking at possible cracks in the pool, the shifting of the earth, um, and so that's why you'll see in the RFQ, a certain type of structure that actually has flex in it rather than a concrete or gunite pool. The closer we get, the, the probability of the earth shifting is there. And we wanna make sure that, you know, over a period of time, uh, it's going to happen, you know, we're gonna have that little movement. We wanna be prepared for that. Um, and so when I, when I'm in discussions with folks, and we're talking to different folks, you know, it's looking at all of the factors. The other aspect, Trusty, but it'll bring up a really good point, is when we look at each of the, the, uh, options, and let's say we expand the parking lot out, and this becomes the entrance for the stadium and/or the, the pool complex, uh, as well as the bus stopoff, that we would probably need some type of entrance on this side. Uh, we, if this was our main entrance, then we're having students, patrons, community members, visitors, who are attending, let's say, our, our largest game of the year for Palma, standing on the bypass road and in a parking lot. So we need to be able to mitigate that and make sure that we have enough adequate space there. Uh, whereas, in the previous picture, if we remove our entrance back, we create a courtyard effect possibly, um, and then, uh, patrons and whomever might be going, students, staff, et cetera, have the option of, uh, moving right to the aquatic, aquatic complex as I look at it and left into the stadium. Each of these options presents challenges, though. The challenge here, um, and our head football coach is behind me, so I know you're there running. Okay, is that our home side of our stadium is, is on the south side right now. If we build a joint-use poolhouse in locker room, we would need to either, one, flip our home and visitors' arsides so that the home side would have access to the locker room, storage, et cetera. But then it poses a problem for sun in the face of our home, uh, our home visitors, or, excuse me, our, our home folks that come to the games, uh, early on in the evening for, say, a freshman or JV game. Wouldn't be a problem for a varsity game, sun's already set, but early in the day, it would be. So we're looking at all of these factors because we wanna be able to stretch our dollars as best we can.
Yeah, you just answered my question about, I didn't think about the sun.
Yeah, and, uh, there's two things that, that have driven each of the conversations I've had, or, or every conversation. One is the sun, and two is that little fault line right there in the pool. So every conversation I've been in, uh, has those two topics have usually come up. And so I, I share that with you. We're, we're pretty steadfast in our recommendations tonight with regard to the science building, the growth building, the sped expansion, the staff lounge, uh, moving forward with all of those. We're also, uh, we feel really comfortable, uh, in moving, and I know Mindy, are you still here? There you are. In moving the Ag orchard from this location and putting it over next to our CTE complex with the future greenhouse, we think that makes logical sense. Um, we think that those are good locations. We've talked to everybody. We feel like it meets the, the curricular needs, um, and it meets our, our student and our programmatic needs as well. Um, we do need some type of turnout for our animals. Um, unfortunately, the barn is, is smack dab in a location. It's there, we have to work around it. And one way to do that is to put in a small, uh, turnout here. Uh, that would allow our animals, uh, as Mr. Vella said, to get off the concrete. They're being medicated, um, right now, so it does help, um, that. The county parking lot being here, uh, as, uh, Mr. Goldstone kind of already attested to in our previous meeting, you know, we like that and that option over here, as far as next to the athletic and PE fields. Um, the softball field, we love this location. We think it's got a great accessibility. We need to do this for our student athletes. Um, but the two facilities that, that we are struggling with as far as we're to recommend their replacement, and we think we need to have, uh, a little bit further discussion and some study on is, is the aquatic complex gonna go in the heart of the parking lot here? And what I mean by the heart is the center, and we have an east-west configuration, or do we have a north-south configuration, um, as you see there? Yes, Trusty?
So we had also discussed the option, I believe it looks like option C. So, option C.
Yes.
Because sticking the baseball field and softball field next to each other several times, same season, they're gonna be very busy, um, to have them across campus, you know what I mean? Sometimes you're gonna have a kid playing on both teams, and so it's hard to get across campus to watch each team play. So we thought that that was a good placement. In that way, couldn't you just swap the Ag pasture and that itty-bitty parking lot? So that you're still getting turnout for the Ag, for the animals, and then putting that itty-bitty parking lot for adjunct duties, you know, staff that has to attend? Flopping those two still works. And Joe, is that the same size practice field that's on the others that's over there? Because PE, I mean, moving PE way out to Nowhere Land, those kids have gotta go get changed and then come all the way out to the back of campus to go do what they need to do, and get all the way back to the front of campus. That if they're up there, that's easier access from the locker rooms to get in there and get out. And so, and then if your pool, you know, so I'm saying that's great except for, obviously, the pool's next to the, so what if you flip it and put the pool next to the field, you know, just flip it left or right? Does that make sense?
Sure.
And I know the bleachers are looking in the sun, and, you know, we can't have everything, but it's just the thought of.
Yeah, depends on your interest. Depends on your interest.
Well, I know. Mr. Smith, I apologize.
That's a, that's a good layout. That's a good layout for us because the home side is on the west side, the sun sets in the west.
There you go. So look, but the pool, I don't know.
Well, Trusty, I mean, one of the things with option C, uh, that, and this is a, uh, it makes logical sense to have our, our athletes come out of a locker room, our PE kids come out of a locker room and ride out in the practice fields or PE facility. We, we, we know that.
Cause you're losing time, obviously. You're bell-to-bell timed by moving across campus.
Cost-wise, we're replicating a whole baseball stadium. So when we're looking at that, what we're trying to do is stretch.
The kitchen money, right?
Yeah, it could, it could be. It could be. The kitchen money right there, right here, too, Trusty, is where the. So that's what we don't know, is, is when we, when we're, when we're recommending to you forward, we wanna be able to stretch that seventy-eight point four million dollars as best we can to accommodate every project.
But I think that practice field is smaller, though, isn't it?
Yeah.
It's not the size we need.
So the practice field here, this is, this is just overlaid, and you can see it, you might be able to see a, a line going down here.
I do.
It's not quite large enough for the practice field that's desired. Um, it can be smaller, but then, um, we start losing.
They're playing, their PBC in there, so it's gotta be a regulation.
Right, exactly. So it's, it, it's not quite large enough for us. Now, if we, you know, when we get into the track and field, we start massaging the actual shape of the, of the track and field cause it's, it's not, uh, just a set size. It can be shrunk down and made wider, it can be made longer. Uh, but we gotta get into that, into that design, and that might accommodate for some. I still think we're gonna be really, really tight on, on a, on a practice field for, for lacrosse and, and your soccers and.
Well, honestly, I know how long ki- kids drag their feet, so they'll never get to PE. You guys will teach like ten minutes and they'll come back.
And, and currently, the kids are, are, are walking out into this area, I believe, and, and this area as well for.
No, but I'm talking about on your other, on Chanae and on Chanae. Look at how far back they are.
Yeah.
They're way out there.
And, and one thing we wanna bring back to the trustees, uh, at our next report with ATIS and, and everybody regarding facilities, is really looking at the flow of pedestrian traffic. I, I think that, you know, and I was in discussion with Roseanne, and we were talking about the location of the aquatic complex and the stadium, and, you know, and there are other factors, right? You have a fault line, you have sun. Um, we wanna have the optimal north-south configuration, but we also know that we have, to be able to have the best path of travel for our folks that is safe. Um, and does this configuration give us the ingress and egress for safety, for people to move, to move freely through the complex? Um, or does this configuration? Um, and I don't have the answer to that, but these are the comments.
Remember where you put the entrance, too. You keep going up that corner. You know, an entrance can go over there by the pool, it can go up there.
Yeah, but that would be a false.
There's several options.
One of the ideas that we've, that we've done on track and field type facilities is we've, we've added in large gates. We're not talking, you know, ten-foot gates, we're talking forty-foot gates, sixty-foot gates, um, rolling gates. So at the end of the game, you have a, a large gate up in this location, you have a large gate down here, you might have a large gate down here, and allows everybody just to flow out and get out of the, get out of the places as fast as possible, um, and as easy as possible, because getting people in and out, obviously getting them in, you wanna, you want them to come through the, through the ticket booth and, 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 uh, have account, account for everybody that comes in. Getting them out, you want everybody to, to flow out and get out of there as fast as possible, if you will. So, yeah, that will be, definitely be something that we consider and talk about where these gates are, and, and how big they are, and, uh, and, and how they're accessed, and from where.
Well, from what I see, since we're, I, I think you're wise to continue to look at these issues.
Yes.
You know, because, I mean, we're talking about, given the facilities that were replaced and that have been there for a very long time, we're talking about facilities that might be there for, say, like, forty or fifty years. So we wanna make sure we do, do it.
Do it right once, right, at least once.
And, and with the other projects, you know, we feel very comfortable making those recommendations to the board this evening. You know, because we, we feel like we've listened, we've got a lot of input, we've, we understand the, the economics behind it. Uh, and Trusty Tiffany, you're right. This area and this area back here, uh, whatever goes in those are gonna be here for a long time, and we wanna do them well. So if we take a little bit longer in our, in, or more methodical to really understand the issues, whether it be the fault line, the sun, the ingress, the egress, the safety, the, where our emergency medical providers are gonna be coming, where, and one of the big things, and Rob and I were talking about this the other day, where does our chemical truck come in for our poolhouse in each of these configurations? And how does that factor? So it's really looking at all of those, uh, variables and bringing you the best possible options so we can make those decisions soon. Uh, but we also.
Where we have the pool right now.
Yeah.
It's terrible.
Yeah.
We're gonna, it's gonna be an upgrade no matter what, okay?
Absolutely.
An upgrade where we have it now.
Right, so we wanna, we wanna be, uh, very smart in bringing those decisions to you.
I'm wondering if the hundred-yard dash on that configuration should be on that side.
And the, and the north-south direction?
Uh, it's good. Uh, I, I kinda tend to be clockwise than what I do. You know, it's kinda hard for me to, you know, we have to put the start at the top to do the hundred-yard dash. Cause that's also a way to start the two.
Right, right.
The, the long races and the long distance.
So that, that needs to be worked out as we get into the design and where, where the starting block, starting blocks are and where the finish line is and, and such. But, uh, and if we get into the, the details with the, uh, with the coaches and instructors, staff on those, on those ideas.
And then, uh, I don't know, graduation will never go on the other field, but, uh, graduation's a, a big event, five to six thousand people. And, uh, that field will hold them, the other field will hold them, but it won't be, they won't be held. If the baseball field remains there, that little area may not hold them. And the stadium won't hold them, you know, hoping the stadium will, for graduation.
Uh, the field's nice.
That field is nice, huh?
It's warm, huh?
The one on the left.
On the west side, is it there?
Yeah. We could use the, uh, CTE building as a stage.
Any other questions or comments?
Was there anything else we could, uh, share with you this evening? Uh, we would like some direction to move forward on some projects, uh, to get the design phase moving, um, and start to work with ATIS and, and, uh, start to take the next step with Measure U. Uh, but I also wanna recommend that we bring back some of our, flush out some of the issues, you know, exact location of where the aquatic complex would be, exact location of where the stadium would be, um, and, uh, you know, move forward with the practice fields.
Are we gonna get a chance to hear input from the water polo coaches, the water polo players, the football coaches? Are we gonna be able to listen?
I put a card in.
Oh, okay, good.
Are we, so what direction are you looking at now or later?
For.
You said you're looking for direction on certain projects now.
Yeah, I mean, if you wanna hear public comment and you'd like to hear from them, yeah, then we can, uh, break that up.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, we have some people in the public that want to weigh in on this, so first, Mindy Craft?
Hello, do you mean? Um, well, looks like we're losing our orchard location. Um, but, you know, while losing the current school orchard learning facility is not ideal for our program, we understand the big picture of school facility planning and are grateful that our administration and school board, um, was willing to listen and take into consideration the needs of the growing Ag program we have here at San Benito High School. And, and I do wanna emphasize, too, that the, the few times that I have spoken, um, you know, I wasn't ever here to, um, to, to pit programs against each other, athletics, um, you know, and Ag, but just to be sure that we were always remembering the big picture of all the programs we have to represent on campus. Um, so, you know, with that being said, we're, the Ag program is really looking forward to having the plant science learning laboratory, um, up there next to the CTE building, which will be, um, you know, where our, our new classes will be housed. Plus, we're working on that plant science curriculum piece, um, you know, with a greenhouse, a shade house, garden beds, and, um, the relocation of the school, uh, orchard that would still be dedicated in. and the relocation of the school orchard that would still be dedicated in memory of William Bianchi from town here. You know, we hope that the compromise options that were presented tonight were well received by the board. The ag department in looking at these options, obviously is mostly in favor of option two A. And I think that Mr. Tenenbaum did a good job of addressing that need tonight. And, you know, and understanding that the ideal situation when moving and handling animals safely for both students and animals is to have that direct connection instead of having to cross streets, investing in more equipment to make that possible. You know, which also helps lower the stress on the animal, which is our strong and firm belief in teaching students proper animal welfare techniques when we're out there at the barn with the animals. You know, as facility construction moves forward, sometimes certain projects end up on the back burner unintentionally, it happens. But it's my hope that our admin and our school board continues to work with the ag educators in planning out this relocation of the school orchard. Because a successful relocation is really gonna depend heavily on the current season of the year for planting, which can be a small window. And to be honest, years of production, years, and I mean years, that might outlive your term on the school board, is gonna be lost during this relocation time because it takes time for trees to fruit. And it's far too expensive to dig out what is there and move them. So, I think we'll start from the drawing board and plant young trees again. Thank you all for your continued support of the agriculture education program and for meeting the needs of the program as we move forward with facilities expansion for all parties involved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ray Rodriguez?
First of all, right after I put the card in, so I think Trustee Robledo was cheating. But I'm concerned that, or I encourage the board to set aside the money because we know that architects, any architects, any school construction takes tons of money. And it would be a shame if we were stuck with this two holes in the ground that we call swimming pools right now. And we went through all this work over decades to close Nash Road and the students were still pinched out through the few passageways they have now. You know, the architects keep talking about a quad outside of this converted student union. But I think that money could also go to rehabbing that area and providing the passageway. I mean, it's not any safer if we're pushing the students to the edge of this blocked up passageway. And then, Trustee Robledo, I have to agree with you as well. One of the things I think, over the years, we've been very poor with is engaging our, the safety component of our community. McGruff the Dog says, when you're talking landscaping and laying out buildings in schools, you should engage your law enforcement, your fire department and whatnot. I mean, and how they're gonna patrol it in the evening for you. If we look at the four hundreds, they're kinda laid out ninety degrees away from where law enforcement would probably want them the other way so they could see up the middle as they drove by.
Ray, I have a question, I can ask him a question. So, the first part, you're talking about setting, your statement was to set aside money to make sure we filled in the old pools and removed them and all that, right?
Did whatever you were gonna do with that area so students could pass through there.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Brian Smith?
Good evening. Appreciate the time here, I haven't had a chance to talk as a group in regards to the football, the track and field facility. So, I'm fortunate to do that here tonight. The one thing, the only thing that keeps coming up, coming back to me is the tradition. And that's the only thing, you guys have all been here, Mr. Day been here, Mr. Tenenbaum, Coach Thatcher, Mr. Robledo, you guys have all been to Friday Night Lights, Friday Night Football games. And what it means for our team to come out underneath the home stands. And so, I just really want you to keep that in mind as you progress through this thing where, however the track lays or however the field lays, extremely important that that home atmosphere is produced. Because though I believe we start our work in January with the guys and all those things, you know, I think, I think we could look back, and I know in the course of my eleven years coaching here and eight years old playing Pop Warner on the same Andy Harden football field, okay, some thirty-three years ago, that, and I should speak for our community is they don't want the sun in their eyes, I think they deserve better than that. I've watched other teams break down and wilt on the other sideline because of the sun just beating down on them during day games, obviously at a younger level. But even at the JV games, I go up, and so I would go up in the stands, try to get a beat on what the teams are doing there. And if you look across the way, there's coaches, you know, covering up the glare, there's parents in the opposite stand, they can't see the game. And that's obviously at an earlier level than the varsity game, at an earlier time. And it's extremely important that we create that environment that we've always had, that we've had here for an extremely long time, extremely long time. How do we rewind this, how do we go back?
Back here.
Up and, back here. So, you know, we have over two hundred students in our, student athletes in our program. And I don't know what that cost of, maybe that's a portion of your cafeteria money here that Mr. Robledo's talking about. But the locker rooms that we come out from our home side, that's extremely important. That's a feeling that starts on August fourth and is carried out all the way through the end of November and unfortunately, hopefully, in, you know, the beginning of December. Our kids take great pride in that area, it's hard to kick them out at night, so it's extremely important to that piece. If you kept the home side here and we're traveling from across the way here, you're gonna lose a part of that feeling. And I know this because I did it, in ninety-two, ninety-three, we had our lockers, our lockers were way over here in the portables. And we had to make this lawn jaunt and, you know, there's a moment when guys kinda get fired up and things like that and they're coming across. But then you cross the visitor's side bleachers and you don't get a roar until, well, you don't get a roar because you're going to the back of the end zone. You don't, because you're going to the back of the end zone to warm up where if you've been to a Friday night game and it's probably five minutes left in the JV football game, all of our guys come storming out here and there's a sense of community right there, a sense of pride, a sense of commitment and dedication that people are talking about since Monday for this community. So, I think that's extremely important. If you flip this thing and you put it on the other side, I mean, those are all the things that you gotta think about, that track's gotta be flipped and the hundred meters is gonna be on that side. I had an opportunity briefly here and I went to the Gilroy Track Meet on Saturday, it was the longest track meet I've ever been to in my life. But I could see us holding an invitational and inviting fifteen schools and all those things. And so, if we're on this side and you're holding the hundred and the two hundred during two o'clock, three o'clock, the difference with the Gilroy field is it does run north to south and the home side is on the west side. So, as it's got four o'clock, five o'clock, people started taking down the pop-up tents and stuff and there's a little bit of relief there. But that is a long day, that is a long day right there. If it's to your back, it's still a long day, but you have a better chance of kinda withstanding. And those are all the things USA Football is talking about, beyond the cushions, there's heat, safety regulations, the heat strokes, those are all big things that are coming a part of the game because there's more safety involved in the game more than ever. The entrance, I mean, you guys, you guys are the guys, you guys are figuring that out. I mean, you could put it here, you could put it here, you could put it here, like Mr. Robledo had over here with the pool. I don't know what the difference is between a pool being right here, a hundred yards away from a fault line versus twenty yards away from the fault line, I don't know. But I know it's important, I know it's extremely important.
So, Brian?
But, I just want, yeah.
What's your, what's your just general feeling about a north-south configuration as opposed to an east-west configuration for the stadium?
Well, I just know that on a north-south stadium, we could get the west side. And our fans, our community doesn't have to battle the sun.
So, you like option B?
That's the next one.
Cool, okay. That would be your preference?
That, or keeping it the same and keeping our home stands where we're at with the lockers, now I know there's a share in the locker room and all that, I get that, we're trying to, I'm with you on that. But if there was an option, yeah, because now we're here, here's our locker rooms, here's our home stands. And snack bar, probably, I don't know where that snack bar is at, but I'm seeing it somewhere over there. And the environment is conducive to a community that's bled and lived this thing for a long time.
Can I add something? Also, most of our sports don't play at night as well, you know, soccer and lacrosse and field hockey, they're starting in the afternoons. And in the springtime, it never gets dark, so that sun is a factor if our home side is on the suns for their other sports as well.
Is this area, oh no, well, I know you got the baseball field there, is that area large enough for the pool area? I don't know if that's been talked about over there with an entrance coming in here? I don't know.
We once had a design like that where the pool area was right there. But we were probably afraid the kids going in there and jumping in from that classroom.
Yeah, absolutely. Just, I just asked that you think about that tradition and a long time standing, you know, and Mrs. Neme kinda mentioned, you know, with all the other facilities and what they look like and the flow of the building, you know, a beautiful stadium, brand-new stadium, and where is the, where is that tradition? Where's the culture that's been there for a long time of Andy Harden Stadium? Thank you.
So, we'll kinda conclude and ask the board for some direction here, looking at, where's that over there, it is. Looking at project, the Science Building, the Growth Building, obviously the sped expansion up here, South Lounge is up in the other area. Asking for direction to move forward on all those, if we could get that through this evening. You know, we believe with Adam's input that the county parking lot will go here, we'll work with Mr. Vella, take a look at practice field rendition here and possibly even here, what the size difference is. And then, we'll focus our energy really on the configuration, north and south, and east and west, and bring back, you know, those options to you at the next meeting, which would be April eighteenth. April eighteenth, and then we'd be able to take a look at the pedestrian flow of traffic, look at our sunlight, look at our joint-use facilities, and have a better understanding of all of that. That sound good?
Do you want, we just need to make, Tiffany, consensus, this is on act, it sounds acceptable to the board?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
You got direction.
All right, thank you very much, yes.
Go right, that's your direction.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we have Roseanne with the construction projects and managers.
Thank you, Adam.
So, page two eighty-nine, I believe, of your packet is the general fund projects list. And in February, there was very little spent, eighteen thousand only. Obviously, we're not spending anymore on.
Twenty-nine?
Two oh nine.
Two oh nine, I can't, oh, okay, sorry, two oh nine. The line goes right through the page number. It's this sheet.
All right, I got it.
So, we spent eighteen thousand out of the general fund in February and have spent one point three million this year to date. So, if there are no questions, on Measure G, the next page, two-ten, we've spent one point six million dollars, nine hundred and forty-nine thousand on the CTE building, forty-two thousand on the ADA compliance work, thirty-one hundred on the ADA, the ag building conversion, and then six hundred and thirty-three thousand on the VAPA building. And I'd like to point out that the amount we're spending for construction on the VAPA building will be transferred to Measure U as soon as we receive those funds. Right, because G was going to pay for design of the VAPA only, but for cash flow purposes, we're using G right now.
The thirty-one hundred for the ag building, is that just basically for plans, is that what it was, or?
Or state fees, I'm not sure, I'd have to look at it.
Yeah, because we're kinda holding that off, right?
Well, but we, there is a, there is a contract that was approved for that. The one in the packet is expanding the scope of the work. So, and we spent, this fiscal year, we've spent fourteen million, seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand out of Measure G. So, a lot of money.
Well spent.
Yes, yes.
Well spent.
I think we have beautiful facilities.
I think you oversaid the.
Amazing.
Affirm that, oh, that's good.
Yeah.
That's excellent.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
May I have Mr. Tenenbaum again for the RFQ?
Okay, good evening once again, trustees, so Exhibit L eight is an RFQ. This item comes back to you for adoption and moving forward. And I want to tell you a little bit about the rationale behind moving forward with this RFQ the way it is. One, we have a facility that is currently dilapidated and unused. We have hundreds and potentially thousands of students that are not learning to swim. We have safety concerns, we have just a myriad of issues regarding our two pools, which really is one pool and, you know, a skateboard facility if you really, you know, go back to my seventh grade days. But we would like the board to move forward with this RFQ for two purposes. One, we believe we want to open up the competitive bidding for architectural services from a myriad of firms. It's not to say that ATIS can't provide that, it's not to say that ATIS can't bid on that, I know they've done great work with us and partnered with us. But we believe with this particular project to get out of the gate early, there are quite a few high school districts and quite a few districts in the state of California already locked into their pool complexes. So, we want to get out early, we also believe that it could save us money in the long run. We want to create that competition, this is a business after all, we want to save money, we want to stretch our dollars. And so, I ask you tonight to approve this RFQ and let us go out to bid for qualifications.
So, this includes the pool, it looks like it includes a locker room, so how's that gonna integrate with the stadium and all that then?
Yeah, so what we want to do, and that's a great question, Trustee Dela, so we had to build as comprehensive as we wanted as far as the RFQ was concerned regarding the pool house, the locker room facility, all of that, and it can be scaled back. So, one of the things is, is we put every piece into this that we thought would be possibly applicable to the project.
And amend it, you're somewhere you can pull things.
Yes, and amend. So, what we didn't want to do was start small and start adding. You know, that never works, right? We wanted to start with whatever we felt was appropriate based on everything that we'd seen in all the Reedley Project, the Grant Project, the Carmel Project and et cetera. And then, we could scale back depending on what we needed to do for monies from the board.
And several other sports need that locker room, right?
Absolutely.
So, it's not just basketball, you know, football could still have their own locker room if so, if that comes to light. And there are several other teams that would benefit from this offer as well.
So, I have another question, so this, this looks, how does this compare with the, you know, the, kinda like the conceptual drawings that we've been looking at where there's, where it looks like there's kinda like two, two floors, one large one is.
Yeah, it's identical, Trustee Tiffany, so you have one fifty-meter Olympic-sized pool and one learn-to-swim pool. And it might not be scale in the actual drawing. And it might not be scale in the actual drawings that you have from ADIS, but these are the two pools that we would like to move forward with to get costs. One thing I think is really important is to understand what our cost parameters are. We've heard from ADIS, but we haven't heard from anybody else at this point. I think it's healthy to have fiscal competition.
Do they want to make a motion or ask questions?
I'd love to make a motion.
Oh, go to you then.
I'd like to make a motion on the adoption of this RFQ.
I'll second that.
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now you're up here for resolution 21617027.
Yeah, thank you again, trustee delay. This is an annual resolution that we bring forward. April is Child Abuse Prevention Month. I'd love for the board to endorse this resolution so that we can get this out to our staff. As the board may or may not know, child abuse is one of the largest forms of domestic abuse in our country. We'd like to get your support, we'd like to get that out to the staff, we'd like to endorse that. With your approval, we can do that.
So move.
We have to have a public hearing, so sort of a question over.
Does this already exist with us?
We do it every year.
You know that thing that I had to get through, German Gets Worse, like, that already-
No, that's a little different, that's a good question, trustee delay. So this is just creating awareness.
Okay.
So this is the awareness piece. What you're talking about is a state mandated piece for any public employee regarding-
Yeah, for any of your students, I had to go, kids are certified.
I'm sorry, yeah. That's not Sean, that's CDE.
Okay, well, the public hearing, Ray, you have your comments? Public hearing. Now you can make a motion.
Okay, I would, I would move the adoption of the resolution presented.
I second it, yes.
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 Thank you, trustees.
Okay, next item, resolution 21617028, decreasing classified work.
So, thank you again. This is the second step in our process to bolster our night custodial crew. Really appreciate the trustee's support from the last previous meeting. We have posted and are flying the custodial supervisor position and gaining applications as I probably talk. But this would actually lay off the lead custodian position, but it would not lay off the incumbent employee. I think that is critical. So no one is losing their job, no one is losing their health benefits or their pensions. I just ask for your permission to go ahead and move forward with this. There is a sixty-day timeline window with which we kind of go through a period of time to transition that incumbent employee. So if I could get that approval, that'd be great.
Before the public hearing, honor? Public hearing? Public hearing? Okay, do they want to make a motion?
I move the adoption of the resolution decreasing the classified work due to lack of work and lack of funds for the custodial session.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
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 Thank you very much.
Okay, we're up to principals' report.
Hey, principal.
I want you to stay right there.
Yeah, just sit in the last.
Sounds good, I will.
We can hear you.
I'm gonna put your feet up, just kidding.
Okay, so as we head into next week, it'll be the end of the fifth grading period. So we are, after next week, we're in the last six weeks of school, believe it or not. So we are heading to it. One of the big things that we determined at the end of the fifth grading period is our official top ten graduating seniors. And if you're not aware, there is a board-approved formula that we use. That number one through ten is so close. We've had years where number one through ten is less than a tenth of a grade point away. So it's an exciting time. It usually doesn't shift much from what those students know where they're at. So that'll be an exciting time. April 5th, week, next week, A3 preview night. So that should be an exciting time for all of our county theater schools. Starts at 5:45 in the Matsu Gym. We've extended a little, we're starting a little earlier just because there's some new and more information we've got to give to our second class that will be under our A through G of the graduation pathway. So we're excited for that. We're, you know, kind of going our way. We're trying to showcase as much as we can and get our students excited about coming to the high school. Here, it doesn't take much, students are pretty excited to come here as far as theater schools. As you guys know, there were several of us that were not here at the last board meeting. We were down in Tealac, where it was high school. A lot of, it was a great visit. I can tell you, and I know I can speak on behalf of Mrs. Crow Power, Mrs. Clawer, and all the teachers that were with us. Probably for me, if not the best, one of the top two, three P professional developments I've ever been to. Because you see, you actually see stuff in action. You don't just see it theory, you don't have it just presented to you. But we also, we got to hear about it and we got to see what was happening. So I could take hours describing all the takeaways, but it was a total of nine of us. Most teachers, we took three math teachers, we took our student activities director, who has a great idea, Mr. Vela, because, you know, their student activities program, they, we're very similar, we have a lot in common. Different demographic, they're, we're not exactly the same, they're a different demographic, but they're doing a lot of the things that we want to do or that we are doing. They're ahead of the curve in many areas. But they were very transparent with us, they told us what they were really good at and they told us, very frankly, what they weren't good at. We got to see a lot of it. The intervention period was one of the most beautiful things I've ever seen in school. We saw their math invention and the way that it works. Very systems-oriented, anyway, on and on. So we got a lot of, we got a very, we were lucky, they were rehearsing for a bulk group visit from the state of California, so they used us as a rehearsal. I mean, I felt like we were all lost when we went to their school, they were so hospitable. So we've got some things that Mr. Beckport is working on, a nice plaque that we want to put together and thanking them. Their hospitality was above and beyond, it exceeded our expectations. So obviously, you know, I think Mr. Barnes and I sat with superintendent Tenbon, and it took us an hour just to talk about one of the things that we took away. So that's something we'll continue to share, and we definitely want to integrate into our strategic plan. But a lot of great ideas from a lot of different aspects of things that we could do to help our college.
Did you get a chance to see the partnership between them and their own military, right?
We didn't get to see it, but we heard all about it. We, they're, you know, ASB, you know, Mrs. Lamos and Mr. Scav said pretty much all. We never resolved anything, which was good. They spent a lot of time together and they really shared a lot of really creative ideas. We saw some really good things that their ASB does. And they're very, they admire a lot of things that our ASB program does too. So very good visit, but I'll end that part there just because I can go on about that piece. WASD committee, WASD visits. We currently have Mr. Dirks and Mrs. Julie Carrier, our hoop teacher, are over in Portwood High School. We've been getting text messages left and right from Mr. Dirks because he's so excited about some of the things that he's seen over there. So it's definitely something that is really worthwhile, having our staff do that. Mr. Quinn actually did, just came back from a WASD committee visit at a Rosen High School. Small, small, you know, small school in the valley. So we've got several other folks going out to schools in CA. There's also Coach Lowe, and I believe Mrs. Grissom is also doing a, are you doing a WASD visit this year?
April.
April. So we've got some good, we've got some folks, a lot, I mean, it's just great, the ideas and just some of the things that we can bring back to the school. Master schedule, we are, Mrs. Grissom probably has one of the hardest tasks this year because with new ideas comes the ability and the skill for that assistant principal who's in charge of the master schedule to make it work. So the lovely thing about being the principal or even like superintendent, you're like, hey, let's do this, or hey, let's do that. And I've been there, because when you're in charge of the master schedule, you're like, sounds great. But remember, nothing's for free on the master schedule, you know? So she's got that, she's doing a great job. And so we're, you know, we're massaging through things and getting creative and seeking to do that. So a lot of input from our teachers and our, especially our department chairs. Mr. Nan Chavez, who's our student board rep here, couldn't be here this evening, but just to let you know, he has been recognized by ATSA, our local region. He was a runner-up for the Every Student Succeeding Award. So I'll be taking him to the Springfield in May, and hopefully some of his family can accompany him there. Graduation caps. Our senior class officer, Breanna Martin, she just did a great job. I mean, she did a great job. So we've gone through a pretty thorough process of gathering feedback. A senior class approached me, this is about the third time they've approached me, this is probably the best job they've done, about being able to decorate their caps for graduation. I'll be honest, from a personal standpoint, this is not about me, but from a personal standpoint, it's not my, I prefer not, but again, it's not about me, it's about the kids, obviously. And she just did a really good job because she just didn't come and say, hey, we just want to decorate our caps. She researched a lot of neighboring schools, she drafted some guidelines. And so what we did first is we, I went and visited the senior class meeting. I mean, of course, they're all for it. So we got the student perspective, they all want it. Then we went to the grad, the parent grad committee, and they were for it. And obviously, they definitely agreed on having some parameters. And then I talked about it, I talked with our administration cabinet, heavily talked to our, especially our graduation coordinator, Ms. Chavez, and then our activities director, Mrs. Lamos. So it's a consensus of being in favor of it, but we're very, we're working closely with Mrs. Martin in drafting a contract. And in fact, I met this afternoon with Mrs. Chavez, a grad coordinator, Breanna Martin, so we invited her to start drafting an agreement and a contract.
Is it a board decision or was it an administrative decision?
It's an administrative decision, yeah, the grad piece.
Actually, they go by board, action nineteen ninety-three, they refer to the graduation committee all the decisions dealing with graduation so that we could go on with it. And remember, the superintendent, principal boycotted that graduation because they didn't agree with the board.
Yeah, the graduation committee didn't want to say, hey, they didn't want to be the ones to make the final. I'm completely comfortable making that decision as a principal, but it wasn't going to happen without getting stakeholder feedback. So it was a widespread consensus in support of it. So once we get closer to what that final agreement will look like, I can provide a copy so you guys can see what that would be. But, you know, obviously, we don't want anything-
Do you have the idea what the guidelines are on that?
Yeah, so a lot of what you see in like your typical dress code, nothing that, you know, roll of thumb what I told, nothing's going to damage your reputation or your school or your class, right? Big roll of thumb. No profanity, everything has to be more of your forte, you know? Where you made, where you're going to college, you know, the class of, you know, two thousand seventeen. But we don't want any references to weapons, any derogatory statements, anything clearly written down. The other big piece is most schools don't allow for like any kind of three-D images, you know? It's got to be sort of flat.
That'll be an elevation, isn't it?
There'll be an elevation. So we've got pictures of some pretty creative stuff, but, you know, we don't want to turn it into for lack of better words, a circus, but we want to give the kids an opportunity to be proud of what they're doing.
And be creative, that's what we send out there, right?
One student already told me I'm putting Thank You Mom on there, or something like that. So we'll update you on that as we get closer. Sesha Chavez says, this Friday is actually the official state holiday of Sesha Chavez's birthday. So this month, today, Mr. Perez, along with his Chicago, his Mexican-American Studies class, who just changed name, they hosted a series of assemblies in collaboration with the Apocentino. They did these what they call actos, which are one-act plays commemorating Sesha Chavez. And then on Friday, our local youth, our local, Lula, I have to tongue twister, our local youth, Lula students, who are mainly Samuel High School students, they've organized, they've helped them organize an assembly where we will have Sesha Chavez's grants. I believe things that are on Sesha Chavez will be coming to speak to you. So they're all volunteer assemblies.
Auditorium?
What's that?
In the auditorium?
In the auditorium, and I'll make sure we get you the information. But we wanted to align it with our Mexican-American Studies courses and then also where we get a lot of interest. So we've got that going on.
My daughter was very impressed, and she did not know much about Sesha Chavez. And she came home, she's kind of history buff and just come to town, so.
Yeah, we just, there's family here in Hollister, so we've got a lot of good networking here. ESAP talks is next week. Mrs. Clawer is one of, really, our testing guru, our testing leader when it comes to our testing.
Really?
Does a lot of coordination, but next week, we will be going into the classrooms in the school's administration and doing our ESAP talks. And really, it's to inform the importance of ESAP. We've had a lot of conversations even in this room about the motivation of the elevator. It's also got AP tests and things like that. So when we get back from the break, we will be administering the ESAP test within the students' courses so that they take them with teachers if they know that would come. So ESAP testing will take a little longer than how long it does because the overwhelming feedback from teachers was, let's have our own kids. Because we know who they are, we know how to motivate them.
There's a thought, and I'm just going to throw that out there, we were actually discussing that too, motivation that you're looking for, was it meet and exceed, correct? If you meet, you get a silver star, or if you exceed, you get a gold star. For every year that they do or whatever, they can wear a graduation as a decoration on their gown. So it's just a thought that that might be a motivating, especially for those students.
That's a great idea. One of the things we do every year in May is we issue out acting and blockage awards. And we used to give a little patch for their performance on the CST. Now that we have the ESAP, that'd be a great, that's one of the things the students have told us they'd like to have a patch to put on their neck or the shapie, or the frame. Something like that would be pretty good.
Yeah, a little silver edge, gold edge, that way they, even if you meet, you know what I mean? You're winning, and if you exceed, you get a better one, because you're going to want kids who want that gold. That don't want the silver, will want the gold. But there are out there, and if you give it, and you give something to reach, they'll go for it.
Yeah, and last but definitely not least, you can see the, you know, the envelope being pushed, especially by our DCs who've come in front of you already. You know, within our DC meeting, we're really taking a really good look and reevaluating where we're at. And we won't go into detail because you'll see some of that transpire. I know Mr. Tenbon will comment on it. But we're getting very intentional about what we're doing. We're making sure that we are going slow to go fast. I know I'm giving you these little, these little sayings. But I think the best, the one thing that we're, our approach right now in general is that before we try to implement, for example, an intervention period or do all this really nice stuff that we saw in grade ubs, we need to make sure that we have a very solid foundation curriculum-wise, our teachers know their standards and things like that. I'm talking in generalities here, but we can provide more details of what that looks like, but we're getting very focused on that.
Are you getting pushed back, or are you getting-
A little bit, but a lot of this is coming and stemming from our department chairs, who are our leaders. The decision to do this is really based on the assessment that those leaders have been making throughout their departments throughout the year. And so instead of continuing a plan that we see as maybe not as effective as it can be for the rest of this year, the decision has been, let's start getting, let's start setting ourselves up for what we know we want to do next year. And so that's been received well. Not every department's in the same place, but, you know, we're very-
When I got to hawk a board vote a long time ago, wasn't it in the bus here? So you got to get on the bus.
And you can see we've got some very strong department chairs. They're not afraid to have a people conversation, not just with their teachers, but with me. They come and tell me, hey, that's not working, you need to change that. And it's, as a principal, that's the best thing you can have. You can have instructional leaders that are very honest with you and they don't tell you just what you want here, except that you need. So anyway, that's very important.
That's great.
And most people are afraid to go to their principal and say, it's not working. So thank you for allowing that. I say safety net.
Okay, next item, the superintendent's report.
So I have my hundred-day report. I'm going to take a few minutes here to read to the trustees and the administration. And I think former trustee, Brad Reavis, out there in the audience. And then I have a copy for each of you that I'll provide to you. So I wanted to capture a few things. It doesn't capture everything, but I think it'll give me a nice summary of the past hundred days. So it is and has been an honor and privilege to serve as the interim superintendent of Samuel High School District for the past one hundred-plus days. During this time, I've had the opportunity to meet with a myriad of employees and work closely with many different departments and teams within the district. I valued every minute I have served in this role. Based on my experience, I'd like to provide you with some context surrounding the areas of strength and areas of growth within the district. Although this list is quite comprehensive, it does not capture every area that I've had the opportunity to explore. However, it does provide a roadmap and direction for future endeavors. Once again, thank you for all your support, guidance, and teamwork. So areas of strength. The administrative team's resilience, drive to improve, and collaboration is impressive. They have displayed excellent collaboration and the ability to solve complex problems while also forging ahead to serve our staff and students. Mr. Ramirez has been instrumental in working with staff members to achieve success for all students. The work of the entire team, no member excluded, in the face of adversity makes me very proud to call myself a bailer. The ability of the team to implement pilot programs to ensure staff and students are excelling are now in place and ready for the future. The ability of the team to implement pilot programs to ensure staff and students are excelling are now in place and ready for the future. Taking risks and innovation are celebrated as we continue to push the academic envelope. Entire staff has displayed a willingness to collaborate, pull together, provide input and feedback as we continue to make academic progress to serve our students in a more productive and efficient manner. There is a spirit and work ethic that is not only commendable, but permeates our campus. Overall, we have a committed and dedicated staff that is extremely talented. Specifically, the recognition of two exemplary employees throughout my one hundred days are Rob Zimmerman and his work with the facilities and projects. His work has been stellar. He is efficient, productive, and an asset to the district. Additionally, Ms. Hydrick's efforts to provide continuous support and dedication through a time of adversity has been exceptional. I cannot imagine a more dedicated employee. Ms. Crocker, Ms. Clawer, Ms. Grissom, and Mr. Birx have all made significant contributions to our team effort as we move forward to improve the school and district. Moreover, the entire team's ability to move forward with the completion of Measure G and general fund projects under budget and on time is a result of dedicated hours and diligence by all. Ms. Escano's work with the myriad aspects of the bonds has been instrumental. Our use of bond funds has been exemplary and has been validated by the report issued by the Citizens Oversight Committee. This is a result of many dedicated and focused employees. We've also created a plan to address Measure U funds while also staying focused on our promise to be excellent stewards of public funds. Our work with both bargain units has been collaborative and productive. We've had the ability to navigate many issues and problem solve in the best interest of all involved. Dr. Foster and Ms. Spencer have been a pleasure to work with through negotiations and many other items. We have settled negotiations with both bargain units, thus providing stability to our district. I share the belief that fiscal responsibility is paramount as we continue to monitor and plan for the best interests of this district. This is a team effort and will be essential in order to remain solvent and serve the needs of generations to come. Retention of new certificated staff has improved greatly on campus. We continue to make progress retaining new teachers, which is due to the efforts of Ms. Kathy Pepe and many others. Our process of onboarding staff and then supporting them throughout the year has improved, and we will continue to improve due to the efforts of the Samuel High School team. Bringing the EL, Curriculum and New Teacher Program specialists together and aligned has been a positive step to even greater retention while also serving to support new teachers to the district. The development, the development of the multi-year strategic plan focused on academics and academic integrity has begun to galvanize our direction. Mr. Derek Barnes's work with the strategic plan and eliciting staff input and feedback is not only instrumental, it is crucial to our short-term and long-term efforts. The defining of academic priorities provides the district with direction that is focused and clear. We have begun to look outside the district and research best practices, RITOs, and WASC visits, which are two of the highlights that have been instrumental. The call is to turn good intentions into action. The strategic plan provides us with the platform to set clear expectations, goals, and metrics for today and the future. Without focus, even the best leadership ideas will fail. The most ideal research-based initiatives will fail, and the most self-sacrificing earnest leaders will fail. Worst of all, without focus by educational leaders, students and teachers will fail. The district's deployment of Chromebooks and our staff's ability to integrate these tools has become the norm, not the exception. Our efforts with Google Classroom has led us to the district being recognized as one of the googliest in the school districts. We have now transcended integration and technology use in the classroom, and this is quickly becoming the norm. This not only prepares our students for the twenty-first century, it also ensures equity in a global economy. All of this would not be possible without Mr. Fursetta and the technology department's support, guidance, and tireless effort. Student involvement in athletics and extracurricular activities continue to be a highlight of the district. Overall, student behavior, school spirit, and our ASB programs provide involvement and supportive students. The ASB program continues to support students and staff alike with a focus on raising funds and creating awareness, which leads to a more cohesive school community. Special education, co-teaching, and inclusion have provided many students with opportunities to excel and truly be provided with faith. Ms. Cobbin and her team have been recognized for their efforts by Dr. Ludetti as a potential model program for other high schools to emulate. Our staff's willingness to collaborate in this area has been exceptional. This program has led to inclusionary efforts with ELD and co-teaching possibilities that ensure equity and access from many of our students. Good intentions have been translated into action. Areas of growth. Stability and stable leadership have been a common theme through all of my meetings with staff. Solidifying our academic direction and focus for today and the future with defined priorities and a clear action plan to address equity, access, and high expectations for all students is paramount. This can be achieved with the implementation of common grading practices, the development of essential standards, and the implementation and use of meaningful, common formative assessments. The cross-curricular collaboration across content areas is a must in the area of common core. The strategic plan must, uh, address clear expectations for all students, ensuring equity, access, and high expectations. It is vital that high standards in the classroom for academic excellence continue to address rigor, relevance, and inclusion. This will enable the district to offer more AP and advanced courses. The application and implementation of resources to support staff and students is necessary in order to be consistent over time, building vertically over a period of years to attain gold-ribbon status for Samuel High School. Backwards mapping our goals to achieve this status will provide clarity and achievable markers for success. CTE pathways need to be robust, and include STEM and computer science pathways. Our students need to have opportunities to prepare them for an unknown future. They must be provided with problem-solving, critical thinking, and hands-on opportunities to compete in a global market. By adding these pathways, our students will ensure equity when entering professions that require more to think, analyze, create, and synthesize information. Connecting CTE pathways to industry is the next step. Preparing students for a complex workforce that requires hands-on skills is a priority. Our students should be able to apply the skills learned in metals, auto, woods, ad, et cetera, to a trade that is meaningful and prosperous. Robust pathways provide these opportunities. The reconstruction of the Baylor code focused on character and development of the whole child is a next step that needs to be addressed. This focus will ensure that both socially and emotionally, students' best interests will be addressed daily on campus and in advance. The reconstruction process should be implemented and reinforced with fidelity from day one of students entering our campus. All students in dash should understand the meaning, purpose, and direction of the Baylor code. Most importantly, this code needs to be publicized and shared broadly, so that stakeholders understand and reinforce our priorities throughout our community. Communication with all stakeholders, internal and external, is one of our highest priorities. This effort should incorporate all aspects of communication, ensuring clarity, positives, and areas of growth. The creation of a communication officer will line our efforts and provide one message of clarity to the greater school community. Branding of the Hey Baylor logo and standardizing our name brand will provide the district with continuity and consistency. Upgrading the website platform as well as updating information is critical for communicating with the public. Developing a plan to address facility demands and new facility growth while mapping out needs for today and the future is of prior importance. A fiscal plan addressing staffing, equipment, and growth will be necessary to address growth in facilities while also maintaining the highest of standards and safety for our beautiful facilities. Supporting and training middle managers, DCS, and PLC leads, and best practices which build capacity and address the staff needs is essential to building an inclusive and collaborative academic institution. Systems need to close loops, provide consistency throughout the campus. Going slow and maintaining focus will enable the district to build continuously over time. All aspects must be coordinated around a strategic plan. Our laser focus must be clear and concise. While working systematically, vertical and horizontal integration and alignment within content areas is another area to support and develop. Connecting certificated evaluations to rigor-relevant inclusionary practices in the classroom is necessary to measure performance and provide continuous support. Creating a tiered evaluation system that addresses assets with a growth mindset would be a logical next step. In closing, it is with the most profound respect that I share these strengths and areas of growth as we continue to strive to move forward from a good to a great school and district. Having a focus on what we can do to improve the organization is my primary goal. And the progress made thus far enables our direction to become more clear and sustainable over time. Once again, these past one hundred plus days have been positive and productive, helping to forge our path as we march towards gold-ribbon status. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're up to trustee reports. Start at the end, John.
Um, so, uh, my family had the, uh, privilege of, of participating in the Every Fifteen Minutes, uh, week. And that is a phenomenal program, and it's very impactful. And, uh, even though you know that guy's gonna come knock on your door, and even though you watch him walk up the walkway, suddenly knocks on the door, everything changes. And so, um, I'm glad that the district supported that, that the school does that, and I look forward to seeing that again in two years. Um, Sean, I'd like to get an update, uh, next time on the tennis courts in the L U of the city. And I know that's, don't get me wrong. Um, as we dig into the, these turf projects, I know there's several feedback days for the actual turf material out there. And I see absolutely no reason in the world why, why we should pay a contractor a markup on some. Like, you know, send them to the store, buy you a case of water, and let them mark it up twenty percent. So we, you know, we need to, we need to research these feedback days. I know Wiseburn's got one in particular, and I'm sure there's several others. But I see no reason to buy a, a product and have somebody mark it up, just for their own fun. Um, and then, um, I mean, keep the pressure on, uh, developing, modernizing, uh, increasing the relevance, whatever you wanna call it, of our CTE, um, programs. And we got these beautiful state-of-the-art buildings coming online, and I wanna make sure that we're, that, that we're providing an education that's aligned with industry, that is gonna, uh, pay dividends in terms of jobs for our students, uh, upon completion of a CTE faculty, so.
Any?
Um, I also attended Every Fifteen Minutes. Um, I've always seen the videos on YouTube, but I'd actually never seen the funeral. So I attended day two and regretted it. So, I mean, in a good way and a bad way. So amazing. Uh, my child was actually just watching them, even though it was fake. And her stomach dropped. She was sick. You know, it was just, it actually really impacted her. And so I appreciate the program and all the hard work that went into it. I attended a track meet as well as Mr. Smith on Saturday. I was there from eleven to five thirty. Um, the kids were amazing. Um, they, I sat in the, I sat by the pole vault area, so I wasn't up in the stands. And I was with the children. They were very well behaved, um, cleaned up their area. Actually cleaned up other schools' areas that dropped things on the ground. So, um, that was super impressive to see how well, um, they treated each other as well as other, other athletes there. Um, our pole vaulters PR'd, both of them, first and second place PR'd that day. And, um, one was fourteen feet, yeah, almost thirteen feet. And it was hilarious, because the Gilroy dispatch guy was trying, the two of them were sitting there having a great time, and tell, the guy went telling the other, um, just, just get you another chance to come get me. And they're talking great, and they were looking for, how you say, like, um, clashing. And the kids were, like, inspiring each other. So that was amazing, because they were looking for conflict, and there wasn't one. Um, I'd like to see, uh, I know I bring it up quite a bit, but I haven't seen much about the college acceptances. Okay, they're coming out in massive forms, and I haven't seen anything, any promotions of any kind. So I really would like to see either pictures, Facebook, uh, website somehow, get these kids up, because they worked their butts off and they should be recognized. Um, the practice cast was given, the math and English, right? Uh, is that an April fourth thing that I'm, are we supposed to get data? So I'm super looking for even.
Uh, if the board, uh, would like to see the data, we met with the, um, with the staff, I mean, over the data. We do have some concerns on the validity of the data that we're getting from that. And I think we'll know for sure when we're able to calibrate when those same kids get to actual tests.
Okay.
And so, um, but we can still bring it to you, absolutely.
Or the board doesn't wanna see it. I mean, maybe you can just ship me a email of it. But, um, I would love to see it. I'm just a data fanatic, and it's something I've been looking forward to. Um, I do, I don't know if this is correct or not, so I'm just gonna give you, again, I do not believe what children tell me. So I'm just gonna tell you what I heard, but not assume that it's correct. Um, that the test from October was the same test that was given until this time. And so it's basically the same questions in a different order, so the kids have memorized it. So he's been told that, I've been told that, by our kids, and that they're the actual ones who took it. So that's not really apples to apples if you're taking the same test twice. So I don't know if that's a legitimate thing, but I think that should be looked into by any chance, because I really don't think we should test them with the exact same questions two times. Um, because you do have your brilliant people who just memorize the answers anyways. Um, I'd like to, uh, somehow we can check, uh, cheer is supposed to become a sport next year. So I know it was something that was on the back burner, but it's supposed to become a sport, so I'd like some information on what's going on with that. Um, also, I know if we're getting rid of our football field or something to that effect. I mean, I know, I don't know if that's a board information, but I'm interested with how we're going to play. Like, are we gonna hold everybody away, which is fine, but then how do you work your senior night and things like that, you know?
We think we have portable bleachers. We'll be able to bring them in, uh, for this season.
Not down there.
Well, I think, you know, I don't really.
They still do belong to them.
Yeah, so we gotta keep underneath, because all the storage, but we think we can bring in enough bleachers that are portable and kind of rent them, if you will, or maybe even purchase them and reuse them to get through the season.
Yeah, so there's, yeah, there's some sort, I just was trying to check out, because there's a lot of sports that do occur in that area. And I don't know if we're shut down for the year. So I know that Mr., um.
Well, what I'd like to do, if the board is so inclined, is have, uh, Coach Thatcher provide a full athletic presentation on all sports, so.
Yeah. What are we looking at? You know what I mean? Um, oh, and then do you, about talk, bring to the agenda about the, um.
Yeah. Yes.
That's it.
Is that the consensus of the board?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
One.
Yeah. Um, I too, uh, went to Every Fifteen Minutes, and I was impressed with John and his speech, and, uh, also Mr. Duran and her speech. And then, of course, Louise Roy, again, did a super job. Uh, quite moving, and I know it had a hit.
Yeah.
All right? Um, for the principal, I'm gonna send you the picture I took of the, uh, Dr. Agudano and the board, so that you can post something on it. And then I'll share your post, because I think it should come from you, not from us.
Yeah.
But I'd like that placed in there. I think that's something to celebrate.
Yeah.
Um, I got a, I read a text from one of our ASB officers that, uh, they were doing, um, shadowing, and there was a fight. And it took, uh, quite a bit of time before somebody came to break it up, because no one was in that area. It was the area between the, uh, O'Donnell Gym and the, um, administration building. So what I'd like to see is where are they stationed, and how long does it take to break up a fight? This one took a little too long. But, um, I think that everybody, if they're in the right place all the time, there shouldn't be a problem breaking up any fights. But I've heard that that's happened before. So it concerns me about student safety. And student safety is number one. Uh, Walk-a-thon, I went to Rancho to help Erica do the Walk-a-thon, and she's got it down to a science. The reason I'm telling you this is because on Thursday, I walked in to see Catalina, and I looked at her face, and I could tell she was depressed. And I go, what's wrong? And the murder mystery was gonna be canceled, because they needed to sell fifteen work tickets. And so she told me they raised about four thousand on that last year. So I thought, oh my gosh, I, I told her, you know, in the whole scheme of life, maybe there's other things to worry about. But then the Walk-a-thon was happening, and I was keeping, you know, the tabs and sending her pictures. They raised over three thousand dollars. So it was almost like a prayer, and that helped her cheer it up, because now they're, they're not gonna lose their whole four thousand. But, uh, they've got it down to a nice science, and she's gonna look into it. Uh, sophomore assembly, I am really impressed with our students. And I'm being really impressed. Eight hundred were so sophomores. I had them moving up as tight as I could, so we can store more people down at the bottom and keep them back. And as I asked strangers to move, they moved, and they were so cooperative. And then I wanted them to leave their own assembly, but I wanted to get them quiet, and they got quiet. And they listened for most of it until the very end. Um, Bailey Evans had to get up and say, one more candidate, let's give her some respect. That's the only time you have to address the audience. That's the only time you have to address the audience. But I'm talking 800 students behaving and the staff helping to get them all set up, moving them, sitting down, getting, we were done two minutes before the assembly was to end with 14 candidates. ASP's still going to Latin, doing a great job there. And that's it for me.
Well, hey, I would have any more? All right. We're gonna move to consent, but we pulled M31. I think that was just the label.
Yeah, let's see.
M3, one, and two.
Yeah.
Pulled one and two.
Oh, one and two? Okay, I just heard one, sorry.
I just heard the two.
Okay.
Page 392, I think that's where it starts.
341, it looks like.
Yeah, 341.
Yeah, 341.
Wow, the fine numbers. As I looked at 342 and 343, I saw one big change between the right one, the original, and this other one. And again, it has to do with kitchen. And it says, "The estimated construction cost for this phase was $900,000." And all of a sudden, because we're talking a new design with the kitchen, $2,200,000. So, I really need to think that we shouldn't, I don't know, should we approve something? Where I'm still running trouble dealing with a kitchen and it seems like we're still going ahead with it. And this right here, it does say additional, let's see. Yeah, the whole reason for it seems to be a kitchen. It goes, "To build out of the project to accommodate the ASP expansion and kitchen." That it becomes clear that we, okay, so it mentions kitchen there. And so, in the original, also the building stated to be, "The future student union is no longer needed to temporarily house," but it mentions kitchen again. So, as I was looking at that, I'm wondering, should we approve this part or wait until we study it a little more?
The, the way I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, this part has to do with what we're doing to the Ag Building and the bathrooms and the structural upgrades and.
But no kitchen?
Yeah.
Okay.
And the reason I want to propose, because maybe, maybe, it's just because I'm dumb, but, but the whole, I don't even know what's being presented here. I don't know what the change is. I don't know what we're trying to, what we're being asked to approve. I'm confused, right?
And the light differences.
That's, that's kind of my problem with both M31 and two. I don't know what you're asking me to vote on. I'm just confused. So, maybe you explain it. All right, I'd give it.
The increased scope is the structural upgrades necessary to the building, the relocation of the gas meter. There's a gas meter right now that's in front of the bathrooms. It has to be, well, in front of where the bathroom doors would be. It has to be moved.
Roseanne, could you point out where your?
Oh, I'm looking at page 342's.
Okay.
Project background and understanding.
Right.
So, the structural upgrades, the relocation of the gas meter, and then the utilities, and then power upgrades. So, it's all that section.
Relocation of gas meter, appropriate relocated utilities and power upgrades for the future space. So, that's, moving exterior finishes for the upgrade, side work area. Okay, and so, so it says that the new estimated cost is 2.2 million. And the board approved something previously for that?
Yes, that's the one on page, starting on page 343, that's the original.
Okay, so we have, so the board approved $900,000 previously and now we're?
Going from 900 to 2.2.
Done. To move the gas meter. And on the next page, I, I can't move that. I mean, that's.
We're not voting for the cost of the construction. All we're voting for is the fees. And the fees are gonna be based on the construction cost down the road. So, these are tentative fees anyway. So, it's, it's, the contract, if I understand it right, is to, is to design it.
Right.
I mean, right now, we saw it on the master plan. You saw boxes.
Okay, so, okay, so, so we're not?
We're not approving the 2.2 million.
Just the 169,000.
So, the, the 128 was already approved?
Yes.
We need to give.
So, it's additional 170,000.
Right.
Okay. Well, that's a little bit better than additional.
I'm sorry, I didn't explain that right.
I'm sure you did fine. I just didn't get it.
Well, I think that we can do a better job of presenting this information.
Okay, so.
These are hard for me.
No, no.
I don't know where you're changing.
Right.
Does that make sense? Like, I would love bold, like I, bold but not covered. Bold or underline it, you know?
So, okay, so, M31 is an additional 170 grand to, because the scope changed, you're gonna have to move some utilities and something like that.
And, yes.
That is correct.
Okay, I didn't look at that. Okay, and then, so then what, on M32, what changed there? Or is that something?
I don't think we even have, we didn't have a draft.
We had, we, this is just the contract for the science building.
Brand new, so this is not a change.
Right, no change.
Okay, and this is the one on 344?
Wait, M3, wait, no?
No.
It's on three?
Oh, yeah, 346.
346, 347, and 348.
Okay, so the estimate, so on this, we're looking at an estimated architectural fee of 1.155 million. 347. And, and, and then, estimated architectural fee of 1.155 and then energy compliance, decommissioning. So, so we're voting to approve 1.237 million?
Yes.
Estimated.
Estimated architectural, and so that's, that's all just design fees? For a $14 million.
Because they're based on a percentage of construction.
The state, the state, O P S State, which is Office Public School Construction, they have a fee schedule for architects and they get so much based on the cost of the construction. And it's a floating scale. So, this is an estimate based on that number. So, that, that could go down if the cost, they're based on 14, or, yeah, $14 million. If it costs $12 million, they're not gonna make as much. It adjusts down or up depending on the cost.
And that's the 1.10 at time cost?
Expenses.
That's addition.
That's reimbursed expenses.
Yeah.
I know it's a lot of money.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just wanna make sure we got fees.
Yeah. Well, the good thing is, if you saw the science building cost the $14 million, it was projected at $20 million in the two, two, three presentations ago. So, if we're watching our economy scale there, there's a bit of savings there.
Yeah.
I, I, you know, just comment, I think in all these buildings, we, we should, you know, I was looking at CTE sticker shock. I think we ought to be a little bit more cautious on expenditures myself.
We've taken a little different approach. We've all talked about this and we have a much more economical approach to how we're going to achieve all of these projects.
So, just, just for fun, if the science building was, if we were still talking about $20 million for a science building, what would that $1.2 million design fee turn into?
It's not, the more expensive the building is, the higher the percentage.
Yeah, it's a percentage.
Starts out at like, I don't know, what, 8% or something that goes up to 12 or 14 or?
If I may?
Yeah.
Sure.
Please.
It starts, it starts at, I think it's actually 8% and it drops down by every half a million, another half a million, that percentage fee goes down. Overall, if you get up to like a $20 million project, and that's construction cost, not, not project, $20 million project, it's, it's, I mean, if you average it out, it's, you know, maybe like 6.7% or something like that. It's, it's a, it's a sliding scale. So, every increment, that, that percentage drops. So, you're half a million, up to a million, then to 2 million, I think. I think it goes to 4 million, then 8 million, then, then above. And it slowly drops that number in a percentage way, percentage, so that your, your overall percentage for the project goes down significantly as that number goes up.
All right, is there, is that, do you have that scheduled somewhere?
Well, I was just gonna ask you, if you can provide that schedule to me and I can get it to the board so that they, we don't have, ultimately, this is a shock, right? I mean, you're seeing a large number. Where does the number come from? How is it derived? If you can do that, we could do, I think that's worthwhile. I think everybody should have it so they understand.
And it says here that the, the fee is calculated in two parts. This is on page 347, basic compensation. The fee is calculated in two parts. First, compensation for the above basic services will be a percentage of construction, computing, and accordance with our master agreement attachments B and C. So, I would like to see that master agreement attachments B and C because that, that, here it doesn't state that it's tied to OPSEC or whatever it was, whatever happens throughout there, Steve. So, I'd like to see that just because that master agreement was made before. I was a trustee, so I'd like to see a copy of that. I, I, I have a, I have more confidence, you know, saying, "Yeah, I'll vote for something" because the compensation's based on, you know, the California, whatever that acronym was you threw out there, rather than saying, "I'm voting on 1.237 million." Right? If it's, if it's just a schedule that, that the state says we pay, then fine, that's great. But this is, we're about on a number here, right? Not a schedule. And so, that's kind of what part of, through, through the baby question a little bit. If, if there's a schedule, let me see the schedule and then do it. And the agreement should, I guess this agreement references back to our master agreement, not the whatever. So, I think that part of my confusion, my ignorance on this, right?
Well, no, I'm saying why not you?
But, but it's, it's.
Doesn't make sense.
These, these documents could have, this, this M2, M whatever, wrong, M3 could have been presented to me a whole lot clearer so that I would have just gone for it on the consent agenda. But I didn't know what the heck it was, so I had to pull it, right? So, that's kind of, you gotta, you gotta pretend like you're talking to a three-year-old that doesn't think that's gonna happen.
That's fair. You guys haven't been involved yet, so.
No, it's, it's super hard coming in with prayer, agreement, because then I don't wanna, how you say? I don't wanna negate something that you've already decided upon just because I'm here. But then, if I'm not fully informed, I don't wanna vote on anything that I'm not fully informed.
I appreciate the questions.
Yeah.
It's no problem to give you the master agreement.
Yeah.
Awesome. I just think it's a kitchen.
The master bringing out the schedule on the next year, you know?
Is that a dog with a bone on her kitchen?
No kitchen. All right, I'm, I'm.
It's a kitchen, okay.
Okay.
So, it, it sounds like to me that it was kind of a consensus that we would have this until next meeting? Is that what you'd like to do? Because then, then you'd be able to look at that.
Is there, I mean, is there a, I don't want to.
Yeah, there, if we, if, if you feel comfortable as if like to move forward, it would be appreciated. We can get you the master agreement and the schedule because they are doing a lot of work already to move this project forward.
I noticed that these proposals are dated December 13th, 2016.
We held on to them because we didn't know for sure we were doing.
Yeah.
So, I, I'm, I'm, because I'm okay approving these things tonight because, you know, we're gonna do a lot of work for data.
Yeah.
If, you know, after I see the master agreement and I like it, whatever, we'll get up on to it later on. Joe knows.
He's all right.
I'm very sensitive to cause of what these things, you know, what we're getting from, from online.
So, so Joe, in every contract, if we can put a little fee schedule in it, include that with the master agreements.
We do that, yeah.
The board is informed so we don't have questions. Worst thing in the world is that there's none of them.
Yeah.
Thank you, Joe.
We need to extend the meeting or we'll quit on this on the turn, closed session, so.
I'll move to about M2, M3, one and two.
And then, in addition to the request to consent?
Oh, we need the rest, yeah, so, so the whole, yeah, the whole consent agreement.
Yes.
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 Yeah. Yes. Okay, our next meeting is April 4th and we'll return to closed session.
Like, I never thought of August 13th.